Good evening. Do we need to do the school thing? Hey, that worked better than the gavel. Good evening. Today is January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three, and the time is six-thirty P. M. I will now call the regular meeting of the ISD one ninety-one Board of Education to order. Welcome to those of you who are in the audience tonight or who are watching from home. It's great to see such a full house this evening. It's been awhile. Director Werb, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Moved by Director Miller.
Second.
Seconded by Director Werb. Is there any discussion? I would like to remove policy one oh-four from the agenda for this evening. Do I need to make a motion? Do I? Alright. I make, I move that we remove policy one oh-four from the agenda. Seconded by Director Miller. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The amendment carries will now vote on the rest of the agenda. Is there any further discussion around the rest of the agenda? All those in favor of approving the agenda, the amended agendas, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. First on our agenda this evening is the Athletics and Activities Recognitions. I'd like to invite Athletic Director Kevin Kleiner to the podium to join us in celebrating our students' accomplishments so far this year. Welcome, Kevin, and thank you for joining us to share a little about these students.
Thank you, Board Chair Hume, Superintendent Battle, members of the school board. I appreciate the opportunity to share some of the wonderful accomplishments of our students and teams in District one ninety-one. Each of the people we'll honor tonight will recognize at the state or even national level. I, as you might know, I'm new. I'm quickly learning about the amazing talent, dedication, and character of our students' show as they participate in activities and athletics throughout the school year. They represent themselves, their peers, and our community in such a positive light, and I'm proud of all their accomplishments. One thing to note, tonight we'll be celebrating accomplishments from this past fall, winter, and even last spring, as we weren't able to honor some of these students and teams at that time. With that, we'll introduce our first honorees, members of the girls' volleyball team. And as your group is called, your activity or sports program, please come and stand in front of the school board in this side of the table. Perfect. Alright, girls volleyball. Want to congratulate the Burnsville Blaze Girls Volleyball Team. You can come on up. Congratulate them on their phenomenal season. The team was crowned Section Six four double-A champs and qualified for the state tournament. Members of the team are Karina Benson, Kate Dam, Tori Girmacki, Ainsley Peters, Julia Valuos, Tori Fuller, Abby Breeze, Messiah Betis, Ashlyn O'Brien, Julia Perrine, Ellery Devon, Kyla Frank, Evelyn Shero, Hannah Rude, Ava Grover, Emma Baker, and Kate Murray. Individual awards are as follows. Kylie Frank, All-Conference and Academic All-State. Karina Benson, All-Conference and Academic All-State. Messiah Betis, All-Conference. Ellery Devon, All-Conference Honorable Mention. Julia Valuos, All-Conference Honorable Mention and Academic All-State. Abby Breeze, Academic All-State. Evelyn Shero, Academic All-State. The Blaze Volleyball Team also received the Minnesota Volleyball Coaches Association Team Academic Gold Award for having a team cumulative GPA of three point seven or higher. Head Coach Joshua Wasfed, who's here tonight, said, "The team has put in so much time and effort in changing our program and making Blaze Volleyball one of the top programs in the state again. They came together and displayed what it truly means to win as a team." The Burnsville Blaze Volleyball Team is coached by Wasfed, who was named Section Six four double-A Coach of the Year for the second year in a row, and Assistant Coaches Stephanie Henshaw and Paige Cruiser. Congratulations once again, Girls Volleyball Team. Next up is Girls Cross Country. If anyone from that is here, they can head on up as I start reading. We're recognizing tonight freshman Carly Lamont, who was named All-Conference and placed fifth in sections, qualified for the state tournament. Carly ran nineteen-minute, forty-two-second, point eighty-one, hundreds and tenths of a second in the five K at the state meet, where she placed sixtieth out of one hundred and sixty runners. Coach Charlie Burnham said, "Carly had the single most impressive improvement from one season to another that I've ever seen. She won from about fiftieth in the conference to sixtieth in the entire state, won two individuals, and ran Burnsville's third fastest five K in school history. I thought she could do well this year, but she exceeded all expectations and emerged as the type of leader the team can build around for years to come. The team is coached by Charlie Burnham and Assistant Coaches Jeff Winterlin and Jen Waller. Congratulations Carly on a fantastic season." Even though she's not here, let's give her a round of applause. And next up is Boys Cross Country. Coaches and student athletes are here, can come on up. They are awesome to see you. As they make their way, I'll begin reading. Congratulations to Quinn Hess, Junior, and Liam Merrill, freshmen on their first appearances at the state tournament. They made the state field out of Section Three, three double-A, or three triple-A, sorry. Merrill and Hess placed ninth and thirteenth respectively in section race, qualifying them for the state meet. At the state meet held at St. Olaf College, Quinn placed one hundred and twentieth out of one hundred and sixty runners with a time of seventeen minutes, nineteen seconds, and Liam placed one hundred and twenty-second with a time of seventeen minutes, twenty-one seconds. Coach Jeff Weber had this to say about his student athletes. "Liam is always looking for ways to make his teammates better. He has a fearless ability to go hard for every race he competes in. He has a great work ethic with all the drills and exercises he does, and most importantly, he has a great T-shirt slash hoodie collection. As only a freshman, he has made more wonderful things, he has many wonderful things to come. Quinn has amazing energy level. He brings up all of his fellow athletes to have them compete at the highest level. He has led in other ways as well, giving rides to others, bringing bagels when needed, cheering on all regardless of ability level. The amazing thing about Quinn is that he is involved in so many activities that he's able to manage all activities and do them all so well. Amazing things on the horizon for this young man. We look forward to watching Quinn and Hess in the coming years." Next up is Girls Swimming and Diving. Members of the team want to head on up. Recognizing two students tonight, one is in attendance. Here we go, Grace Effield and Paige Calvin, both senior divers, qualified for the Class double-A State Meet at the Section Three double-A Meet on November tenth. Grace won the section title with seven, or three hundred and seventy-two points, while Paige ended up in fourth with three hundred and forty-two points. At the state meet, out of thirty-two divers, Grace placed twelfth and Paige placed twenty-fourth. Coach Kim Herod said, "Both of these girls are phenomenal athletes who train hard and lead by example. Their delightful personalities make them a true joy on the pool deck. Paige's dedication to the sport has led to improvement every year. Grace's excellence and dedication to diving has led her to nearly undefeated record in high school competition, repeatedly breaking and setting school records in both sixth and eleventh dives. She accumulated with a section championship, accumulated with a section championship and twelfth-place finish at the state meet. Grace received All-Conference and All-State Honorable Mention, while Paige received All-Conference Honorable Mention. This fall, Grace signed a national letter of intent to participate in women's swimming and diving at Missouri State University in Springfield, Missouri. Paige plans to attend Drake University in Des Moines, Iowa, to earn her bachelor's degree in entrepreneurship and business management. The team is coached by Kim Herod and Assistant Coaches Eric Testor, Chelsea Reynolds, and Kendra Vogt." Next up is Boys Tennis. Members of that team, if they're here, can make their way up. As I begin reading. Last spring, Tyler Hadford, class of two thousand and twenty-two, and Senior Henry Peterson were six double-A doubles champions defeating Edina and Blake. They competed in the Boys Tennis State Tournament, finishing as Constellation finalist. Tyler and Henry were the first state participants from Burnsville since two thousand and fourteen. Coach Ryan Hadorf said this about his athletes. "Henry made varsity in eighth grade. He had a powerful forehand and serve. He had quiet demeanor on the court, but he is a strong competitor. Henry has played mostly singles for his career, but teamed up in doubles this, in his junior year to win Section Six double-A in the spring of two thousand and twenty-two. Henry plans on attending college in the fall and majoring in business. Tyler made varsity in seventh grade. He's a fiery competitor who uses his athleticism and anticipation to dominate the net in doubles. Tyler's been one match away from qualifying for the state tournament every year since eighth grade, always losing to tennis powerhouses Blake or Edina, which made the Henry and Tyler's run in the spring of two thousand and twenty-two even more special. Tyler is currently attending Gustavus College and playing on the tennis team." I do not believe they are here tonight, so give them a round of applause. And continuing to Girls Tennis, if any of them are here, they can make their way up. This fall, Shauna Bruha, Senior, and Addie Bowlby, Junior, finished second in the Section Six double-A doubles tournament to make the state competition, ending a fifteen-year state drought for the program. Shauna and Addie are the first female doubles team to make this, make state for the Blaze. They also had to beat their teammates, Junior Ashley King and Senior Madison Crumholtz, in the section semifinals to earn a state spot. At state, Shauna and Addie lost in the first round in straight sets to Minnetaka before getting a three-set win over Elk River in the Constellation quarterfinals. The team is coached by Ryan Hadford, who also was named Section Coach of the Year. Coach Hadorf said, "After an extended absence in any state participants, Burnsville had Boys and Girls Tennis Doubles Teams make the state tournament in two thousand and twenty-two. Burnsville is placed in Section Six double-A for tennis, which is the toughest section in the state year after year. Defeating teams from Edina and Blake in tennis is no easy task. I'm very proud of the work and dedication of our Burnsville student athletes." Addie made varsity in seventh grade. She has one of the best winning percentages in program history. Addie has a big forehand and an attacking style of play. She's played almost exclusively singles at Burnsville, but teamed up with Shauna to be the first doubles team in Burnsville Girls Tennis history to qualify for the state tournament. Addie has verbally committed to play D U one hockey on the East Coast at Sacred Heart University. Shauna has played and excelled in every sport she has tried since she was young, especially basketball. She picked up tennis for the first time in ninth grade and quickly became a very strong player, beating players that have been playing tennis their whole life. She has a wide range of tennis skills and mental toughness. Shauna and Addie won an epic match over Edina on their run to the state tournament. This fall, Shauna signed a national letter of intent to play D two basketball at Minot State University. Let's give them a round of applause. Girls Track and Field is next. If anyone from that program is here. Congratulations to Zoe Dundin, class of two thousand and twenty-two, for being named the Minnesota State High School League Section Three triple-A and Minnesota State Champion in the eight-hundred-meter race, with a time of two minutes, nine seconds. She's also the school record holder of the eight-hundred-meter. Coach Abby Atkins said, "As her athletic awards and achievements show, Zoe is one of the best athletes to graduate from Burnsville High School. She won every individual race she ran last spring, and her senior season accumulated with winning the eight-hundred-meter state, state title. Zoe is a two-time state champion in eight-hundred-meter. On the track, Zoe was always one of the first athletes to cheer on, motivate, and support her teammates and competitors from other teams. Zoe is a hard-working, humble, and kind individual. Her coaches and teammates proudly celebrate her many achievements representing Burnsville High School." Let's give a round of applause to Zoe. Boys Track and Field. That program is here? Nope. Okay. Congratulations to Thomas Dundin and Kristen, or sorry, Christian Belt, both class of two thousand and twenty-two, for qualifying for the Minnesota State Tournament last spring. Thomas placed seventh in the eight-hundred-meter race, while Christian placed ninth in the long jump. Christian was also a hundred-meter qualifier. Thomas is currently attending the University of St. Thomas, where he is on the track and field team. Christian is attending Iowa Central Community College, where he's also commuting in track and field. We wish both of them success as they pursue their education and passions at the next level. Let's give them a round of applause. Next up is members of the Girls Badminton Team. If anyone from that program is here? Nope. Okay. Going right into it. Congratulations to the Girls Badminton Team on placing third at the Minnesota State Tournament last spring. There were also doubles teams placing third in state competition. Students who qualified for state in singles were Maddie Blackburn, Delaney Wu, Mina Wang, Jasmine Tran, oh, sorry, I misspoke there, Mina Nguyen, Jasmine Tran, a sponsor player from Prior Lake, and Molly Murray. Students who qualified for state in doubles were Abby Breeze, Karina Benson, Lisa Genus, Leah Meereid, Sherilyn Morales Rojas, Bonnie Hanson, and Mackenzie Wright, and Marika Belton. Abby Breeze and Karina Benson placed third in doubles at the state tournament. Coach Anthony Nguyen said, "His team is highly resilient, driven, and smart. Everyone supported one another through the tough season, finished, and finished their work and their hard work showed. Their ability to adapt to situations will suit them well in all their endeavors. I'm very proud of their accomplishments." Let's give Girls Badminton a round of applause. Alright, and I'm switching gears to Activities. Activities Director Bill Heim could not be here tonight, so I'm going to read these for him. Starting with Speech, members of the Speech Team that are here can come on forward. "The Burnsville High School Speech Team has continued soaring to new heights through their successes at both the six double-A section tournament and at the national qualifying tournament last spring. Ellie Sheldonberg and Ellie Hauvde deserve recognition for all their hard work. Ellie Sheldonberg, class of two thousand and twenty-two, qualified for the National Speech and Debate Tournament, placing third in humorous interpretation. Ellie Hauvde qualified for the National Individual Events Tournament of Champions. Advisor Brendan Klein said, 'Representing Burnsville at the national speech level tournaments is a rare and remarkable achievement. They earn this recognition through hours and hours of practice each week by competing against the best and brightest in Minnesota and the United States.' Congratulations to both." Next up is Members of Esports Team. If they are here, they can come on up. Congratulations to the Burnsville Esports Team in the Minecraft Two versus Two Bed Wars League for qualifying for the Minnesota Varsity League State L A N Tournament. The team, which consists of Max Herr and Kayden Hogan, completed the regular season with a record of four and four. At the end of the regular season, they were part of an eleven-way tie vying for the last three spots in the top sixteen. However, their great tiebreaker stats placed them at the fifteenth seed. At the state tournament on January fifteenth, Max and Kayden were knocked out in a tough round-one matchup against the number-two seed Roseville, resulting in a top sixteen finish. Advisor Eric Shimshock said, "While these two students were new to esports this season, I never had to worry about them. They were my reliable, rock-steady foundation. They showed up every single match like clockwork, never even needing a sub." Let's give them a round of applause. Continuing with esports. Next group of esports. Yeah, stay up. In the Rocket League two V two, the Burnsville team consisting, consisting of Diego McCollum, Jack Frame, and Kobe Tao, qualified for the Minnesota Varsity League State L A N Tournament. The team completed the regular season with a record of five and three, putting them into the eighth seed for state finals. Their five-and-three record allowed them, or sorry, record, I think, I'll just keep going. I think there's a typo there. The record, how close they dropped their matches, with most of their lost games decided by a single-point differential. At state, they won their round-one matchup versus Worthington in a decisive three-oh series, before falling to number-one seed North High School in a nail-biting five-game series resulting in an overall top-eight finish. Advisor Eric Shimshock said, "I stepped into the coaching-advisory role this fall and felt like I jumped into the deep end. These players helped, showed me the ropes, and our esports program this fall probably wouldn't have existed without, without them. They've also been great mentors for many of our program's younger players, most who are new to competitive gaming. It's been a real treat watching these players compete with such skill and coordination." Let's give it up again for esports. Alright, next group is our DECA program. Those advisors and students are here? Congratulations to the Burnsville High School DECA students for their success at District Two Competition held January sixth. The following students have all placed or were in the top twelve of their section. They will now move to the state competition, which will be held in March. If successful at state, students will advance to the international level of competition held in Orlando in April. Ryan Brown placed first place in Hotel and Lodging Management. Kira Tang, second place in Restaurant and Food Service Management. Noah Lipnitz, third place in Business Services Marketing. Julia Osmolski, state qualifier in Restaurant and Food Service Management. Adida Shore, first place in Principles of Business Management and Administration. Colin Boyum, first place in Principles of Finance. Zachary Johnson, state qualifier in Principles of Hospitality and Tourism. A.J. Niesel, Ben and Ben Strutron, state qualifier in Entrepreneurship, Team Decision-Making. And Tonella Boring and Ally Norton, state qualifier in Travel and Tourism, Team Decision-Making. Ryan Brown, Noah Lipnitz, and Kira Tang, second place in Independent Business Plan. Kira Tang and Ben Strutron, state qualifiers in Sales Demonstration, General Home Service. Advisor Chris Lund said, "All these students have demonstrated a high level of knowledge and, and skill in their chosen topics within the business and marketing field. Between prep meetings and outside studying, they've all shown the academic strength and knowledge that they have learned through our business pathway. I'm looking forward to taking this great group to state in March and hopefully Orlando for the top level of competition." Let's give DECA a round of applause.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any comments or questions from board members? No?
I'd just like to say-
Oh, go ahead, Director Werb.
Yeah. I'd just like to say thank you to all of you for, for being here, and you just make us very proud to be a part of our district, and just thank you.
You took the words right out of my mouth. Congratulations to each one of you for, for all of your amazing accomplishments, and thank you for joining us here this evening. Thank you. Alright, next on the agenda, we will receive a report about the world's best workforce kindergarten readiness from the Student Performance and Achievement Committee, presented by Amina Aftedal, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Carolyn Cherry, Early Learning Supervisor, Angie Tusa, VPK Teacher, Christine McDonald, Elementary Curriculum Coordinator, Tanya Meyer, Kindergarten Teacher at Harriet Bishop, and Angie Cockman, Kindergarten Teacher at Sky Oaks. And I hope I pronounced everybody's names correctly. Welcome.
Chair Hume, Superintendent Battle, members of the board. We are appreciative of this opportunity to highlight some of the great work around instruction of our youngest learners tonight. This evening, I am joined by leaders and teachers of our voluntary pre-K, pre-kindergarten and our kindergarten programs. They will share how they are embracing the strategic direction of supporting and leveraging new methods and original thinking to improve student outcomes for the children in their spheres of influence. Dr. Cherry and Ms. Tusa will give us past and present view of District VPK programming. Ms. McDonald, Ms. Meyer, and Ms. Catchman will share their exciting work with foundational literacy, and all of us have been involved in the Pre-Kindergarten to Kindergarten Alignment Project. First, I remind you of data shared this fall around the world's best workforce goal, all students ready for kindergarten. This fall, we saw growth from a group, from all groups of students in their early reading literacy assessments, with forty-six percent of all students meeting the fall benchmark prior to the start of kindergarten. Growth from last year in the percent of students in all racial and ethnic categories were also noted. This progress, however, still falls short of our goal of over half of our students entering kindergarten, who are poised and ready in their pre-literacy skills. The dramatic growth in the number of children participating in District Preschool Programs is an opportunity to strengthen our programming and their skills in these areas. It's also upon us to provide an easy transition to a successful kindergarten experience. Tonight, I invite Dr. Cherry and Ms. Tusa to tell you more about the services that they provide to our early learners.
Good evening, Board Chair, Directors, and Superintendent. Thanks, Amina, for the introduction and the overview of what we're going to cover tonight. So, in thinking about the history of our pre-K programs and what we're doing in one-nine-one, it's important to note that the district's leadership, if for pre-kindergarten programs, has been led and managed by community education for a number of years. Currently, our leadership includes Jason Sellers as our Director of Community Education, myself as the Early Learning Supervisor, and Cynthia Samperz as our Coordinator, and she was disappointed that she could not be here tonight. So, as Cynthia and some of our teachers and I were preparing for this evening's presentation, I learned quite a bit about the long history that pre-K programs have had in one-nine-one. For over forty years, one-nine-one has served our youngest learners in various capacities. And in the fall of two thousand and seventeen, we had the opportunity to take advantage of funding from the Minnesota Department of Education to create what we know today as our voluntary pre-K programs. So, when we know about and think about VPK yesterday and today, when we started in two thousand and seventeen, we had one classroom in four sites. And in the last six years, we have doubled the number of sites, more than tripled the number of classrooms, and more than doubled the number of students in our VPK programs. Generally, the student demographics and the children who attend each of those programs reflect the neighborhoods in which their schools are located. So, while community education leads and is primarily responsible for implementing these VPK programs, we have to acknowledge just some of our partners who help to make these programs successful. There are eight early childhood special educat- There are eight early childhood special education educational assistants assigned to each of the classrooms and schools, one at each elementary site. They are supported and partner with three itinerant ECSE teachers who provide direct services to students receiving special education, as well as providing consultation and support to VPK staff. In addition to these positions, they have, that have, these have been in place for many, many years, I also want to acknowledge the support our district's behavior analysts have provided, especially in the last two years. Our children have been entering with increasing social, emotional, and behavior needs, and they have been able to provide training and consultation and support for our early learning staff. Because these programs are housed in elementary schools, school principals, social workers, and cultural liaisons, and so many staff that are at those sites have been critical partners in supporting the day-to-day needs of our children, staff, and families, and they are regular contributors to our success. I also want to acknowledge and thank Amina and the CISA team, along with Amy Petrowski and others, for working with me and others to reinvigorate the P3 conversations after a bit of a COVID hiatus, and that you will hear about that later tonight in the presentation. All of these partnerships and collaborations are critical to the continued growth and success of our pre-K programs. So, with that bit of background and acknowledgements, Angie is going to share a little more about her perspectives on some critical components of our VPK programs.
Being a VPK teacher at Hidden Valley, I have appreciated the opportunity to watch my students progress through each grade and stay connected with families after they leave the VPK classroom. This is our first year that we have two former pre-K students that are in fifth grade and will be making their way to middle school. The connections made with families is so rewarding. Today, we welcomed families to our classroom to celebrate the end of our study. This was the first time since 2020. The families were so appreciative to be able to see what their child is doing during the day and experience the classroom together. It was so great to be back together. We often have staff and students that walk by and acknowledge how fun it appears in our classrooms. What I love is that behind the fun appearance, you will find students engaged in interactions with peers, solving problems, and learning how to work together. They are exploring the world of math, science, and literacy, and so much more with inviting materials and in open-ended opportunities. We have always strived to create a strong social-emotional foundation in our early childhood classrooms. We have especially noticed since COVID-19 that now, more than ever, teaching skills for helping children manage big emotions and modeling healthy interactions has been extremely important. You may notice in many classrooms that we start the day with a check-in with how we are feeling, and we end with "I am" affirmations, such as "I am kind" and "I can do hard things."
So, as Amina shared a little earlier about the FastBridge data, as part of one of our recent preKK alignment meetings, we had the opportunity to review the Fall FastBridge Reading Assessment Data. In 191, we administer FastBridge assessments to all children entering kindergarten, and the early reading component is used in kindergarten and first grade to monitor rates of student growth and accuracy of early literacy skills. The overall percentage reported for each student is based on a composite score of phonemic awareness skills, including concepts of print, onset sounds, letter names, and letter sounds. Students scoring at or above the fortieth percentile are considered to be making expected progress on FastBridge national norms. So, in the fall, there were six hundred and one students that were tested, and the percent of students that met or partially met the expected benchmarks in early reading skills who participated in our VPK programs was eighty percent. The percent of students who met or partially met and did not participate in our VPK programs was at sixty-two percent. So, as you can see from the information above, children who participate in 191 VPK programs are more likely to meet or partially meet expected early reading benchmarks in kindergarten than those who do not. This data helps to support the importance and the value of high-quality pre-K programming. And that is the end of our part. Oh, no, there is not. There is one more slide. Let me do that. All right, so our current and future work. I was all ready to pass it on to the more data people. All right, so, our current and future work. So, as Angie shared, the different perspectives around some key areas for our work, we wanted to briefly share some of the current and future work happening in our programs. So, first, around social-emotional learning through the support of Dakota County, we've had the opportunity to expand the number of conscious discipline licenses and training that's available to staff. So, that training has been incorporated both in our district-wide professional development and also provides individual opportunities because it's an online platform. We also have staff continuing to implement studies using creative curriculum as the content guide, and use TS Gold as our assessment tool for monitoring student learning, and outdoor exploration in outdoor classrooms continues to be an important component for our programs. And finally, I am happy to share that our staff have been very successful in engaging families and students during our last two e-learning days, using all of the COVID learnings, such as supporting virtual learning and connecting opportunities, as well as developing engaging asynchronous activities. And as part of the PK work that Amina will talk about later, we look forward to improving the kindergarten transition process. And that is our last slide.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Angie. As you can see, the impact of our VPK program on the preparedness for our students is dramatic, and continuing to build that partnership with our voluntary pre-K continues to be a goal. And how do we reach out and continue to do that expansion as part of our preKK community engagement? In how are ways that we envision engaging other preschool providers in our community to help their programs, the students who are part of their programs also see those dramatic results? And District 191 is committed to equity for all students, and in many ways, that is reflected in our view of reading and literacy competency as a social justice issue. Students mastering skills in foundational literacy and reading at grade level by grade three opens the world and more to them. Tonight, Christine McDonald, one of our CISA coordinators for elementary, is joined by teach kindergarten teachers Tanya Meyer and Angie Kochman to share one of their innovative and new approaches to foundational literacy.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Christine McDonald, and I am the elementary coordinator in the CISA department. And here with me, I have Tanya Meyer, a kindergarten teacher at Harriet Bishop, and Angie Kochman, a first-grade teacher at Sky Oaks. We're here this evening to share a little bit about phonemic awareness and a program called the Hagerty Phonemic Awareness Curriculum. So, first, before we get into the curriculum, I'd like to give you some background information on what is phonemic awareness. And as you may see on the screen, there is a pillar that has five pillars of literacy, and the first component of literacy, effect of literacy, is phonemic awareness. And you may ask yourself, "Well, what is phonemic awareness?" Phonemic awareness, as illustrated, is one of the pillars in the literacy program. Phonemic awareness is the ability to hear and manipulate the sounds in spoken words, and understanding that those sounds creates, in spoken words and syllables, are made up of sequences of speech. Phonemic awareness is essential to understanding that written letters represent sound. Phonemic awareness is auditory and does not involve words in print, and understanding that spoken words are made up of individual sounds. Phonemic awareness gives students strategies to approach sounding out and reading new words. So, I'd like to share with you the progression of our phonemic awareness instruction. As I stated to you, we are using a program called Hagerty Phonemic Awareness, and what happened was, based upon evaluating our students' FastBridge and MCA literacy results, and paired with our progress through our Tier One curriculum called Collaborative Classroom and Being a Reader, we identified that students were in need of explicit phonemic awareness instruction. And so, in the spring of 2021, Harriet Bishop kindergarten team approached the CISA department to ask to explore and pilot the Hagerty program. Tanya Meyer will be speaking to that progress and how they arrived at Hagerty here in just a few moments. So, in this school year of the 21-22 school year, Harriet Bishop kindergarten teachers piloted Hagerty phonemic awareness, and through this work, we met together on a monthly basis, analyzing student work explicitly tied to phonemic awareness, and paired with the monthly check-ins of academic achievement through Hagerty, the Harriet Bishop kindergarten teachers saw amazing growth with their students as measured by the FastBridge early reading. And by the closure of last school year, all but one Harriet Bishop kindergarten student made typical to aggressive growth as measured by the early reading from fall of 2021 to spring of 2022. And because through this small pilot, we saw amazing results, we decided that it would be best to expand our pilot to Phase Two. And as you can see on the chart, in the fall of 2022, this school year, we expanded the Hagerty Pilot to Harriet Bishop kindergarten in first grade, Sky Oaks kindergarten in first grade, and Hidden Valley kindergarten in first grade. We are still meeting all teams together monthly to examine our student work, with the hopes that if we can replicate the data that we did at Harriet Bishop this year, it is our goal to go district-wide with the Hagerty Phonemic Awareness Program to all kindergarten and first-grade classrooms next school year. Just a little bit, two basic skills, but very important skills in phonemic awareness that we have assessed all of our kindergarten and first-grade students in the pilot program this year, is showing great data. So, the first one is beginning sounds, or being able to isolate the initial sound in a word. We assessed all kindergartners who are in the Hagerty program, and by November 23rd of this year, sixty percent of all kindergartners were, received, received all questions correct or, or, achieved all questions, and ninety-two percent of all first graders answered all questions correctly on the beginning sounds. Another assessment we looked at is blending sounds. So, that's taking sounds in isolation and blending them to make a word, as you can see in this illustration. By December 16th of this year, nearly fifty percent of all kindergartners answered the questions correctly, and eighty-four percent of all first graders answered the questions correctly. From administering and analyzing this specific type of assessment, we are also able to identify learning trends in our students, and this data is allowing us to immediately act and respond to meet the needs of all students. For example, our current data in the sites that we're piloting illustrates that students who are new to the country and/or their heritage language is not English are in need of additional pre-teaching and re-teaching of phonemic awareness skills. Being proactive, for example, here at Hidden Valley, we are seeing that data, and the Hidden Valley multilingual teachers, paired with the kindergarten and first-grade teachers piloting Hagerty, are working together this year to provide those students immediate intervention and support so that they can progress through gaining their phonemic awareness skills. And what's exciting about this is not only are we finding that the Hagerty Phonemic Awareness Program is improving all students' learning, but from this pilot, we are able to target specific skills so that when we implement district-wide in the 23-24 school year, we can immediately and proactively put at place, action in place to meet the needs of all of our students. All right, I'd like to share the teacher perspective. So, Tanya, if you'd like to go first.
So, I am a kindergarten teacher at Harriet Bishop, and I guess I want to provide a little background about why we brought this to CISA. So, for years, we have had, you know, a group of kindergarten students who we work with daily, practicing letter names, letter sounds, and they really struggle to progress. Once we get to spring, and they're finally at a place of knowing their letter names, they're ready to begin in a set. For our collaborative classroom curriculum, they would often begin, but they would not be successful in the set. So, they had the rote knowledge, but they were unable to use it and apply it to succeed. So, as a kindergarten team, all of us very passionate about reading and doing a lot of learning about how kids read, we kept having conversations about why, what was missing. We also included our intervention teacher in these discussions, and we kept coming back to understanding that that base foundational block before phonics, before learning to read words, is phonemic awareness and being able to manipulate sounds. We then tried to find resources, and we pulled different pieces from FAST or other resources where we would incorporate into small group and into some Tier One instruction, the pieces of phonemic awareness, to try and bolster the piece we believed was missing. But often, it would be one strand of phonemic awareness, possibly rhyming or onset sound, but we were creating it. It was difficult to do something daily, and it certainly wasn't deep or comprehensive enough, and we knew that. So, as we all began looking, something kept popping up to several of us as we were exploring, and that was Hagerty. Especially as we were looking at other schools and districts that we knew were using our Tier One curriculum of collaborative classroom, often Hagerty was connected with it. Other districts also acknowledged that there was kind of a gap or a hole in that curriculum that needed to be filled. And I will just say, I have attended many collaborative classroom institutes that they offer in the summer to learn more about literacy. I brought this to them, saying, "We're really struggling with this piece. Tell me, are we missing something in the curriculum that's there?" And I was often just told, "You could just beef up a little bit." But there really is not a systematic, comprehensive phonemic awareness component to collaborative classroom, especially not for the whole group instruction piece. There is a little bit when we get to our small group instruction, but again, it's not deep enough. It doesn't include all components. So, we did seek out and ask CISA to consider allowing us to try Hagerty, and a proposal was written in spring of 2021. We did have really good success with it. The instruction is about ten minutes each day. It's an additional piece that we do in addition to the Tier One curriculum. Because it is so short and brief, we have not had to do a lot of adjusting or letting go of the Tier One curriculum that we use, but we found the impact to be significant. So, some of the things that we've noticed, more, more students are learning their letter names and letter sounds more quickly. Students who typically would have started in a set and then struggled, they are more successful, and that's across all four of our classrooms. That was last year, the first year of our pilot. That continues to be the case this year as well. The other thing that's really important to know is that it is positive for all students. It is not only positive for students that are struggling. What we've found is for some of our higher-achieving students, it is helping them to be much stronger as writers, sounding out words. They use some of the actions and tools we learned, like chopping words apart into their sounds, they use that as they go to write. Same with blending sounds as they're reading. So, it has been beneficial to our students who maybe struggle and need that additional boost, but it's beneficial to every student that is getting the curriculum. Most importantly, it's easy for a teacher to learn, and again, ten minutes a day for something that's very, very impactful.
Thank you. Angie.
My name is Angie Kochman, and I teach first grade at Sky Oaks. So, I thought maybe we could get your brains and bodies warmed up a little bit. When we write and spell words, we listen for each sound and match the sounds to letters. So, I will say a word, you will repeat the word, hopefully, and segment the word into sounds. Put your hands together like this, and you are going to move them across your body, and we are going to chop the word. First word is "write." Say "write."
Write.
Get your choppers out. Say "take."
Take.
T.
A.
K. Say "not."
Not.
Nice job. This is an example of one phonemic awareness activity we do in first grade in the curriculum called Hagerty. Our daily lessons in first grade take around fifteen minutes, and we like to use big words like phonemes, graphemes, blending, segmenting, rhyming, vowels, consonants- like phonemes, graphemes, blending, segmenting, rhyming, vowels, consonants, substituting, deleting. We use this language, and we know when we use it, we have our brains and bodies engaged. All students are receiving the same instruction and language, so all students feel empowered when given the opportunity. I am taking a training called Letters. It is based on the science of reading. Phonemic awareness is one of the first reading skills students need to have. I am so appreciative 191 is taking a look at our reading data and noticing that we have a gap, it needs to be filled, and we are being supported as teachers in the classroom so we can do the best for our students. We had a music performance from a few musicians from Kanga this past week at Sky Oaks, and we were all moving and shaking. During the performance, one of our first graders stood up and shouted, "This is just like Hagerty." And then I was like, "The power of connections, right? Look at that. The power of working together for our students." So thank you for your support.
Thank you for both of you for being here tonight, and I want to thank Tanya She Meyer. I asked if we could record her for tonight, and she graciously said yes. So we have about a two-minute video that I'd like for you to share, to view, and this will give you an idea of what Hagerty in the classroom looks like. So this was filmed in Ms. Meyer's classroom, her first kindergarten classroom. Let's see. And it's spinning. There we go. Okay.
So kindergartners, I'm going to say a word part. It's going to be the middle and end part of the word, and you're going to think of a word that has that same word in it. So I'm thinking of "of," and I'm thinking of the word "club." Of, club. Put your finger to your brain, and "club."
Sub.
Sub. Club. Club. Sub. Club. 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 They all end with "of." That means they are rhyming parts. Nice work, kindergartners. For this next, cheese.
Cheese.
Sh. Think.
Think.
Shape.
Shape.
Sh. This.
This.
Are you ready? Here we go.
M-O-T. M-O-T. Not. Egg. Egg.
Tag. Last one.
E. E. S. S.
Say "bed."
Bed.
B.
B.
D. The middle sound.
E.
Last one. Say "shen."
Shen.
Sh. N. Middle sound.
E.
E. G. G. O. O. M. M. N. N.
Thank you very much for letting us speak to you about a proud program of the Hagerty I always have to follow stuff like that. The educators you have heard from this evening are also participating in a project to enhance our experience for District 191 early learners moving from preschool to kindergarten. This pre-K-K alignment project is a representative group of over 20 educators doing a deep dive of key topics to create that common understanding and expectations and establish a stronger working partnership now that VPK is serving students at all of our elementary sites. The group is parsing out the content and practices between the two programs to determine where alignment exists and how to bridge the gaps. Understanding that we are serving the whole child and assisting them in successfully learning and being better prepared kindergartners is to receive that the early learners and leads to early learners being better able to make benchmarks of success, both academically, behaviorally, and socially emotionally. The project team will complete the last of the deep dives, which it will be into family partnerships and transition practices in February. In March, they will come together and pool all of their learning and knowledge to make recommendations to improve our service to these young learners and their families. This is a continuation of work that many of you who have been on the board saw as the P3 learning presented by Cindy Check in 2019. We wanted to make sure that we were continuing and honoring that foundational work that was done and creating that powerful alignment so that our families, as they come into 191 as pre-K students, know that they're on that journey and that pathway to success all the way through and being supported. So, thank you.
Board members, are there any, are you done?
Yep, we're all done.
All right. No one interrupt. Board members, are there any comments or questions?
I just, sorry. I'm sorry, the teacher from Harriet Bishop, what was her name?
Tanya.
Tanya, thank you. Can you tell me again how you came across Hagerty?
Well, all of the teachers on my team, again, over the course of years, had been struggling with this. And when we were looking at different things in various social media, trying to seek out some answers, Hagerty was popping up. And sometimes on things like Facebook groups, we followed collaborative classroom, which is our Tier One instruction, there would be comments below from other schools and districts using that, indicating they also were identifying a gap. So then we started to look at Hagerty. We went to learn more about their resource. We watched YouTube videos of what they were doing. We looked at the cost and realized that it's really relatively affordable as a curriculum compared to others. And so that's when, after having that conversation, seeking it out, we brought it to, at that time it was Bethany Van Osgood, who was the member of CISA that we brought it to.
I want to say thank you for that type of foresight to like, try and figure out what can help our students, looking into it, researching it, finding that program to bring it to our district. That's amazing. I just very, I just can't tell you. I mean, that's so powerful that, you know, you can find that we're having that gap and then go out and find something that can help fix it and bring it to our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And the best ideas that come to us for curriculum and instruction come from our practitioners. They're the ones who know exactly what's working for their students, and so we work very hard to listen.
And just to add, we all want our students to be successful, and when they are not, and we see that, we want to find answers for it. So.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Honestly, I just want to echo that because I guess as a student, it's really nice to know that there really is people who are going so far above and beyond to actually make a difference and actually like, set aside extra time to, you know, being on a Facebook group. I mean, just to find something to make it better for the students. So that really is powerful.
Director Alt.
Thank you. Yes, I too appreciate the innovation. I think it's wonderful, and I appreciate that our leaders are listening to the practitioners because, you know, they are seeing what's working and what isn't working. Kind of a long comment with a little bit of a question following it. You know, it was interesting starting this presentation and seeing, you know, of course we look at the data, and of course, we know that there are so many ways to measure student success beyond the data. In all fairness, I appreciate the growth. You acknowledged upfront, there's more work to be done, and thus, this next part of the conversation, which was wonderful. I really appreciate it. And I'll be really interested to see the results. I know we all will be. The one concern that I have, and I guess this is really where the question comes in, is, you know, I know that in education, there are so many ways that you can say, "Okay, this is going to work. We're going to add this. We're going to try this." I'm hearing that there's balance in terms of this kind of supplementing the collaborative classroom as opposed to being another add that's being stacked on top of it. Was there anything that we divested ourselves of in order to make space for this? Or are there plans to do that if this is, if when this is implemented district-wide?
And I think Tanya spoke a little bit to that. We looked at things that, I mean, looked at the relative inexpensive investment. It requires low professional development because it is, you know, pretty simple and straightforward for teachers. We also are examining our instructional practices with the collaborative classroom and identifying practices that are not moving our students forward and saying, "Where can we shift that 10 or 15 minutes?" One of the areas is our independent reading time. We find that in collaborative classroom, an extended amount of time is given for kindergartners to do independent reading, which would be literacy exploration, picture books, those types of things. But our students are, become significantly frustrated. One, because they don't always have the social, emotional, and behavioral regulation to manage themselves for that extended amount of time, where we could shorten that time, make that successful for them, and at the same time, find opportunities to do these things. So it's, yes, we are divesting ourselves of practices that, at this point, we're not seeing being as successful for our students.
That's great because I, and I thank you for that because it would, it's much better to be divesting and making sure that our staff has balance with what they are able to do, what we know is successful for our students, as opposed to just, you know, throwing stuff at the problem.
And I'm very excited that you'll be hearing from Hidden Valley and Sky Oaks this evening because of the tremendous amount of work, and I don't want to steal all their thunder, so I'll just say, the tremendous amount of work that they've done and how they have stepped up to be part of this extended pilot, because we don't want to move forward with just promises and just with one set of data. And so having practitioners who are willing to step forward and be innovative is exciting. And being able to share some of these teachers this evening, I can't even tell you how exciting it is for them to come and be able to share their stories with you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Battle, you got a comment?
Yes, Chair Hume, members of the board, Director Alt, I would like to add a comment. Angie mentioned letters. So currently, we are one of the recipients of state funding for letters, so they pay for all the license for letters, and I wanted Director Alt to share a little bit more about that expense because we are seeing great impact with that also. So we are looking at that, if the state and this next funding will continue. If not, how do we make it a part of our system and ask the same questions? What do we let go? So you want to share a little bit about letters?
Sure, just a little bit. It is extensive training. It's about 80 hours per person, and so, and the license is somewhat expensive as well. And so the state does support us by offering the license to any teacher until all of the licenses are gone. We have had staff in our district who have stepped forward and chosen to participate in that and take advantage of that opportunity. It is extensive because it is learning on the job. They do the training, and then they come and practice those science of reading opportunities in their classrooms and then take that back again, and an iteration continuing forward. As we look at the impact of things like Hagerty and how that flows into our learning about the science of reading, and I just want to compliment Christine McDonald as being out front, and Jamie Howe, our MTSS coordinator as well, putting together a strategic plan for how we can incorporate that and expand that opportunity for all teachers who want to move forward with that particular kind of learning. And right now, they do that without compensation, except for, and they do it on their own time, and looking at how do we integrate that more substantially and provide incentives for more teachers to participate over the next couple of years.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, I have a question and a comment. Going back to the first part of the presentation around pre-K readiness, I think it was slide 12, there was a reference to conscious discipline. Is there a 30-second definition of what that is? Since we're talking about wanting to increase access to it. Sorry to make you come all the way back up front.
No, we're good.
Too far away. And I think it's a really important piece for you to talk about.
Yes. And I brought Angie up here because she's the one who implements it. I just pay the bill, so.
That's an important role also.
It is an important role, right? Go ahead.
So we view as conscious discipline for a handful of years now, and it's really just about how we create a school family. It's about having jobs in the classroom. It's a positive, positive direction in working with our kids in the classroom and their typical, in what their routines are of the day. It's about greeting them as they come in. So even though it's conscious discipline, and it's a very positive interaction in our classroom, we have a safe place that we create, that's a calm area that kids can take a break. We model that. We teach those skills beforehand before they need it, they're needed, so a child feels comfortable in making the choice to go take a break for a bit. So it's just really about being together as a school family and connections with that.
I think one of the other things that's important to note around conscious discipline is how do we, as adults, understand our impact and the feelings and things, and how do we regulate? Because we're in partnership with young children and helping them to regulate. So it's really important to know what our pieces and our triggers are and all of those things to say, "How are we going to support the children in our classroom?" And understanding the brain chemistry that happens around those pieces, and we just actually had some conversations around the impact of trauma. And so how do we think about all of those things and being able to help kids come in and learn those social, emotional skills?
Thank you.
Does that help?
Yes.
Okay.
Did you, you have something to add?
Yes, Chair Hume, members of the board, to add that discipline means to teach. I think people think discipline is to punish, so I wanted to make that. It's about teaching not only the children but adults to be aware, just as was described.
And a lot of breathing.
A lot of breathing, yeah. A lot of skills in breathing. And we'd be happy, we can certainly share a little bit of written information with the board about what conscious discipline is.
Thank you very much. I just find our, just our pre-K programs especially, I want to thank all of you for coming tonight. Certainly, it was fascinating for me to hear about the programs that we're implementing at our, that we're piloting at the elementary schools, but also even before that, hearing about our pre-K programs. Two of my three kids started in 191 preschool programs. My wife and my oldest son are, work in preschool programs in neighboring districts. So believe me, I know how important this work is and how important it is for setting up our students for success. So thank you for coming, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we will receive a report about Sky Oaks Elementary and Hidden Valley Elementary Schools from Dr. Chris Belmont, Dr. Renee Brandner, Ms. Christine Black, Ms. Leann Collins, Ms. Nikki Harves, and Ms. Hodan Ibrahim. Welcome.
Good evening, Chair Hume, Superintendent Battle, and the board. This is, I believe, installment number three of our school reports this year. If you recall, in October, we heard from our high school, and November, our middle schools, and now I'm here with our, now we're getting into our elementary additions. The goal of the school reports is to hear from perspectives, whether it be school leaders, our teaching staff, or our students' families, information that may be... Information that maybe um charts and reports don't always share. So it's my honor tonight to present to you Principal Brandner, Principal Black from Hidden Valley and Sky Oaks, and then they have special guests they brought with.
Good evening. Um, good evening, Chair Hume, members of the board and Dr. Battle. I'm Renee Brandner, and I'm the principal at Sky Oaks. And tonight, I have Nikki Harvest, who's one of our learning specials at Sky, specialist at Sky Oaks with me.
And I'm Christine Black. I'm the principal at Hidden Valley. And I have with me Leann Collins, who's one of our AdSIS and Learning Specialist teachers, and Hodan Ibrahim, who is one of our first grade teachers at Hidden Valley. We are so proud and excited to be able to come and share with you tonight about Hidden Valley and Sky Oaks. We're proud of the work that we've been doing, and we're proud to share our growth. So after the pandemic, and when our schools started to open up, we found that Sky Oaks and Hidden Valley were on a, a very similar pathway. We found that we needed to do some deep work with academic support for our students and some deep work with social, emotional and behavioral work with our students. And so we've started on um this journey that's together our two schools with Fast for Success and with Hagerty and with our work with Tier One Instruction. And tonight, we're going to share with you what we have learned and implemented, and also affirm and confirm some of the things that you've heard already tonight.
I didn't realize I was going to get the job of advancing the slides here, so. Your patience. I might have chosen in my seat differently.
We have great faith in you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So, um, when Hidden Valley and Sky Oaks started our journey with a program through the University of Minnesota called Fast for Success Reading. And we um found that our staff uh really felt strongly that the Fast for Success Reading Program was beneficial for us in three ways. First, um, just in building that sense of collective efficacy, which is really the individual teacher belief, that we as a whole staff can impact student achievement. Secondly, in the science of reading and learning about the science of reading um and the five pillars of literacy. And at Sky Oaks, so many teachers were inspired that on their own, they signed up to do the letters training, which is very intensive, but that's how much momentum we got from that Fast for Success Reading. And then finally, um, the, using FastBridge assessments and data for instruction.
And so Fast for Success is a program that is led and taught to us through the University of Minnesota. And so we created Fast for Success teams at each one of our schools. And a huge component for that is using our FastBridge assessments. And so this next slide talks about how the Fast for Success Program helped us to train our staff to look at the assessments that we're already giving and to understand the ins and outs and a deeper understanding of what the data that we're receiving means to us. And so through our, through our Fast for Success team, we established data meetings that are happening periodically throughout the year. Um, we are in our second year right now of Fast for Success. Last year, we laid the foundation for our data meetings and for using data. And this year, we've been able to start systematizing that information. So we have leaders in place within both of our schools. We have data meetings that are scheduled proactively. We have teachers that are taking their benchmark data and digging into that data and discovering where our students are growing stronger and where students are showing growth that might not be typical. Maybe it's modest growth is what we would call it, or we might even have a student who is showing flat growth. And then what do we do once we notice that we have that going on in our school? And so we're revenge, we're reviewing our benchmark data. And then we plan interventions together in collaboration with our literacy specialists, with the work that we've learned and done on the slide that was previous, with the science of reading and the work that we're doing through the University of Minnesota. And then we plan interventions and monitor the progress. And then we repeat that prog, that process over and over. And so we have this continuous improvement cycle that's happening within our school. And it's, it's something that has um gone into the fabric of what we do. It's not a new program. It's no longer a pilot. We've done the learning. We've done the implementation. And now it is becoming standard work within our school with all of our teachers. And uh it's very exciting because not only do we have our classroom teachers working on this, but our multilingual teachers sit right alongside in our collaborative teams and work with our classroom teachers. Our special education teachers are right there at the table, and our literacy specialists are right there alongside. Actually, our literacy specialists, and you'll hear from Leann and Nikki later on, but they're, they take a huge lead and have leadership with that in um all of our teams. We have a comprehensive literacy curriculum. You heard some of this talked about already. The collaborative classroom, making meaning, being a reader, being a writer, our Fast for Success Program, and then some of our intervention materials. And so when we take all of those pieces together, along with the science of reading that we're learning and the expertise that our teachers have gained, we have a very comprehensive program. And now, we're going to talk a little bit about Hagerty, which you've heard quite a bit about, but I'm going to invite Hodan Ibrahim up because the best way to hear about it is somebody that's implementing it, because they're the ones who bring that to life. So this is Hodan.
Hello, everyone. My name is Hodan Ibrahim. I am a first grade teacher at Hidden Valley, as Christine has said. I'm just going to share some of my experience with Hagerty this year. I love Hagerty for many reasons. But best of all, I would say it only takes about ten minutes to teach it with quick results. It's active because the kids are using their hand gestures like you did earlier. And it builds confidence because everyone is doing it at once. The students love doing the hand gestures, and I have even seen it being used during writing. The best thing about Hagerty is that it's implemented at the tier-one level, so everyone will get it, whether they knew those sounds to begin with or not. So it doesn't seem like it's an intervention. It's more of, everyone gets it to begin with. The students learn a lot of digraphs, which aren't introduced in our curriculum until later on. So being a reader was one of the curriculum things that were brought up. And digraphs such as the ch sound, the C H sound, or the sh sound isn't taught or introduced to kids until they're in bar or being a reader three or four. And most first graders don't even make it that far until, I want to say, towards the end of the year. Yet, we're only in January, and I have kids who are in bar set two, however, know their digraph sounds, and they're able to apply that, and they're sitting there going, eh, yer. And even if they get those last two sounds wrong, they're at least getting that initial sound. And then the ones that have already been introduced to those digraphs are taking off further and are thinking about magic e's and long vowels. So it's exciting to see that compared to last year when Hagerty wasn't a thing at our building. And I remember kids were asking me, how do you spell that? That was the question I got constantly. Kids are empowered and encouraged in our classrooms right now, and all four first grade teachers have echoed the same message, where they're saying, kids are just willing to take the risk. They're willing to try it out, sound it out, use their Hagerty hands, as we call it, and see how it goes. So I just wanted to let you know that Hagerty is very dear to us so far, and I'm super, super excited to see how the incoming first graders for next year, what that looks like. I can't imagine, because now in kindergarten, they're getting it, and when they come, they'll be far ahead. So I am beyond excited about Hagerty.
And every single teacher at Hidden Valley that works with Hagerty would echo what Hodan is saying. They are sold, uh, because they're seeing the results. And so um we were fortunate to hear about what Harriet Bishop was doing. And Amina said, you know, we're hoping to see how this progresses. And so this next slide um shows some results that we've gotten. And this is with students who did not have Hagerty in kindergarten. So this is our first grade results in Hidden Valley's first year. So if you look at the far left two columns, you're going to see a dark, darker purple column, and that is students that are showing typical growth. And that's fall to winter. And then you'll see students in the light purple columns that are showing um aggressive growth, fall to winter. This was our um data from last year. And so we had sustained our results and went up one percent, so ever so slightly. Last year, we implemented Fast for Success um as an implementation, and this year, we've continued with that and added in Hagerty. And these are the results on the right-hand side from this fall. And so you'll see from the fall to the winter, in the darker purple columns, we went up two percent in students making typical growth. The furthest right-hand column is um where you see the students that made aggressive growth or greater than typical growth. And so last year, we had a one percent ever so slight growth. This year, we had a nine percent growth of students making typical or greater than typical, with our largest growth being in the greater than typical or aggressive growth. That's for first grade. I have another slide that shows our kindergarten data, and this is even more dramatic. And so if you look back to last year, we, this, this is using our A reading data, or excuse me, our early reading data that we talked about earlier that Amina was referring to and Christine was referring to. And what we saw is students meeting the benchmark target. We had twenty-nine percent of our students in the fall, and it went up to forty percent in the winter. If you look over to the farthest right, now that was last year's data. This is on-the-ground-right-now data with the implementation of Hagerty for the first time, along with our Fast for Success. We had thirty-eight percent of our students in the fall showing um benchmark. And just recently, and it's been in January since we've come back from winter break, sixty-eight percent of our students are at benchmark. And so a thirty percent growth from the fall to the winter. And so that is remarkable. So when Hodan says, I'm sold on it, that's why. And it affirms and confirms exactly what Harriet Bishop found. We are so grateful that being part of Fast for Success allowed us to be able to also jump um into using Hagerty. We would never give it up.
In fact, um, Hidden Valley's uh data is so current and up-to-date that the window for benchmarking hasn't even closed yet. So while Sky Oaks does not have the same data to show you tonight, everything that we have, all of the formative data we have, suggests that our results will be very similar. So um when we talk about our students, we look at, we, we often refer to three tiers of um, of where our students are performing. So tier one, uh, or where, and where our instruction lies. So for tier one, those are the things that we do for all students. So every student is part of tier one, and they are always part of tier one. We always want our students to have tier-one instruction. But some of our students are going to need extra help and support. So tier-two support would give them a little bit of extra help, maybe a small group. And tier-three would give them individualized, very targeted instruction for a student's needs. So we have um Nikki Harvest here to um tell you a little bit about tier one, and then we have a video of her teaching. Do you want us, go ahead, and then we'll go to the video.
Good evening. My name is Nikki Harvest. I've been a learning specialist here in one ninety-one since two thousand fourteen. It's my favorite job, out of all my jobs that I've had. Um, so some information is, like, like we've heard tonight, the past two years, we've participated in that professional development with the University of Minnesota, Fast for Success. And that's been very eye-opening. We've taken in a lot of knowledge. Um, we've learned about the science of reading, and the big part of it is we learned about the importance of really diving into the data, just not looking at the numbers, but getting deeper into those numbers. What do those numbers mean? What do we need to do to change those numbers? So after looking over our fall data this year, um, we realized, like you've heard tonight, that we have some gaps in our core reading instruction. So um I thought about using this information, and I've, I've finished my letters training. And just so we know, letters stands for Language of Essential, Essentials for Teachers and of Reading and Spelling. So I've finished my letters training, which was so informative. And I approached my third and fifth grade teachers. So now I'm thinking, what can we do with these older students? The younger students are getting this great learning through Hagerty. What can we do with these older students now that did not get it? So I approached my um third and fifth grade teachers and said, hey, what do you think about taking twenty minutes, two times a week, and letting me come in, and we team teach some word study lessons? And they were like, let's do it. So um that started in about November, October, November. And since then already, students are feeling so much more confident in their word attack skills, more accurate in their decoding. They're stopping me in the hallway and saying, oh, Mrs. Harvest, I tried splitting my word up into syllables today, and this is what I found out. It's just, like, that's never happened to me before. And it's just, I'm like, all right, here's, here's the sword ticket for you. Let's go, you know? So it's been great. Um, the other thing I want to add is, like we said, our, our winter data is still coming in. And something that kind of has been giving me chills while we're looking over this data is the, that aggressive growth, that's seventy-five percentile or higher of growth. It's not just our typical kids. It's our English language kids. It's our special ed kids. It's our students of color. It's our, I mean, it's been amazing, just looking at the names on that list and seeing sixty points of growth, eighty points of growth, like, and then seeing these kids just beam, and just, it, it's just been amazing. Um, so Mrs. Germlin is one of the third grade teachers that I work with. And so she just, um, she wasn't able to make it, but she wanted me just to share some thoughts with you about our team-taught lessons. She said, having Mrs. Harvest come into our class and teach phonics lessons has been game-changing. These students are becoming more aware of how words work, how to break words apart, and how to use these skills outside of her lessons. My students are becoming more confident in their reading skills because Mrs. Harvest's lessons are engaging and so very beneficial. As a classroom teacher, I am also learning so much. So um I'd like to end my time with a quick video. Um, I go into Mr. Richards and Mr. Burke's class in fifth grade, and we were lucky enough to get a lesson, um, a little bit of me teaching with Mr. Richards, so we're going to sha, share that. Just um a little preview before we show it is, we have finished working on the six-syllable types and the schwa sound. And so you're going to see them reviewing and them telling, telling me what the six-syllable types are and what the schwa sound is. And then what would happen after this is this learning that's taking place after the video is the students are then taking that syllable learning, and they're using it to help them read, spell, and find common morphemes. Do we know what a morpheme is, anyone? They asked my fifth graders. They know. And find common morphemes in polysyllabic words. So, and we hope you enjoy the video.
It makes a vowel wrong, but it has to only be a vowel consonant.
Wow. That was, he could take my job, I think. That was pretty good. Good job, Michael. Okay, think. Bossy R, or R-controlled. Okay, turn. It doesn't mean bossy Mr. Richards. That's not what it means. Okay, Harriet Bishop wants to share. Okay, right. Ooh, this one is getting a lot to talk. Okay, Marcelo.
Also, uh, a bossy R is like typically just a, a vowel and an R.
A vowel and an R, and is the vowel short, long, or a different sound? And is the vowel short, long, or a different sound? So give me a word that has a bossy R. Can you think of one?
Bird.
Bird. So what does the bossy R say? Er. Good job. Okay, think. C-L-E. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So as Renee was talking about, we have Tier One instruction. And then we have Tier Two and Tier Three instruction. And LeAnn Collins is one of our AdSis teachers. She's also our Minnesota Reading Corps internal coach. And she is an interventionist and a learning specialist in our school. So I'm going to let LeAnn share about her role.
Great. I'm going to be sharing about SIPS, which stands for Systematic Instruction in Phonological Awareness, Phonics, and Sight Words. When a student is in need of additional support, Tier One, beyond the Tier One, we implement Tier Two and Tier Three interventions during our win time. SIPS is used throughout District 191 as a Tier Two and Tier Three targeted intervention. It's meant for students who need additional foundational reading skills. Students meet with a learning specialist for 30 minutes a day. SIPS has four different levels. SIPS Beginning is developmentally appropriate for kindergarten and first-grade students. SIPS Extension is for our second- and third-graders. And then SIPS Plus is designed for fourth- and fifth-graders, but they are students who are reading at first-grade or beginning second-grade level. So Plus will cover the same skills as Beginning and Extension, but with age-appropriate reading materials. It's actually a chapter book that they take to their rooms or during IDR. It looks like the other students. Each lesson includes the phonological awareness or phonemic awareness you've been hearing about tonight, phonics and decodable words, sight words, guided spelling, and a story. SIPS Challenge, the fourth level, is for students who have mastered those foundational skills. And Challenge focuses on the highest level of decoding, which is the polysyllabic phase. SIPS was developed by Collaborative Classroom, so it's the same as our core curriculum. Matter of fact, the other day, a second grader goes, "Yeah, Mrs. Tollerud, she just taught us don't and won't." And that was in our story that we were working on. So students are able to make connections from what they learn in their SIPS lesson with a literacy specialist to their classroom literacy lessons. SIPS has a phonemic awareness component, which we can connect to our Hagerty lessons. So when you're talking about that, like, we kind of all are learning Hagerty. So matter of fact, right today, we were doing a guided spelling part, and the word was pet. And we had out our roller coaster, and we went, "Pete," and we went, "Eh." And then they came up with that tricky short E sound. So it's going beyond the classroom. Earlier this year, I had a little girl, and she is in Hodaan's room, and she came over from Harriet Bishop. And again, they had the pilot last year. We didn't, and I saw her chopping on the table, like, day two of our lesson. I'm like, "Did you go to Harriet Bishop last year?" And she's like, "Yeah, I did." And so that was really cool. So it's coming in, even these are our kids who are struggling a little bit more. It's a Tier Two and Tier Three, but she brought that over with her. So that's just something I wanted to put in there about Hagerty, how it also can be used in our SIPS lessons. The SIPS lessons are culturally proficient because they provide personal support for mastery. And we can get that because we work in small groups, and we're able to individualize. The other thing with SIPS is our kids have a reading binder. I asked a little boy today if I could bring it. His name's under here. And what they do with this is it gives them some choice for reading. So when they go back to the IDR, the independent reading time, they have their stories in here. Our stop sign indicates we were on this lesson today. And they can read this, or they can choose anything from before here. So that's just showing how also then this goes home, and they're encouraged to read at home. So it goes in the classroom here, some of our things here. And then in the back was our guided spelling I was just talking about. If you would come into a room during a SIPS lesson, you'll see students who are cognitively engaged. They're willing to take a risk in that small group, and they're feeling successful. So SIPS is really good at building skills and confidence for fluent and independent readers. And that's kind of, it's throughout our district. It's a great program. So if you hear more about SIPS or think of other questions, actually, I have people come in and we watch the kids work. I had a fourth-grade teacher come watch a first-grade lesson today. And so if you're ever wanting to get out into the schools, it'd be a great time to visit a Hagerty lesson or come and watch a SIPS lesson. Thank you. Are there any questions? At the end. Okay.
Thank you. So the foundation of all the work that we do at school, and the most important factor, is the relationships that our teachers have with students and that students have with each other. So both of our schools have a commitment to those relationships. And some of the things that we do to make sure that those are part of student learning every single day are by starting our day with a morning meeting. A morning meeting allows students to have individual relationships with other students, have a relationship with their classroom teacher, and then also just to build that sense of community and then practice those interpersonal skills that they're learning with each other as part of that morning meeting time. So both of our buildings start the day with our morning meeting time. We also have our Second Step Social Emotional Learning Curriculum in all of our classrooms. So every classroom is implementing lessons around social and emotional learning. But not only are we doing it a lesson on these different elements, but we're also trying to embed them throughout the school day so that not only are we talking about it in a learning environment at the, you know, in a traditional classroom setting, but also when we go to recess and we encounter a conflict, like, how do we resolve that conflict? How do we work through it? So having the social-emotional curriculum meshed into our day is really essential. And we have combined that with our positive behavior interventions and supports. All of our elementary schools have PBIS, we call it. We all have PBIS. But with our social-emotional learning, our goal is to integrate the social-emotional learning and the positive behavior interventions and supports so that they're seamless. So PBIS talks about making sure that we're clear about what our expectations are for students and modeling those expectations, giving students a chance to practice them. And they're really acknowledging and celebrating students when they're meeting those expectations, when they're in alignment with our expectations.
And so this next slide at the top, it has a quote from Margaret Wheatley, and it says, "There's no power for change greater than a community discovering what it cares about." And when you hear our teachers talk, when you see our students learn, it's unmistakable. We are excited about how we have this cycle of learning in our school to make sure that we have a healthy school climate that supports all of our students. We are learning together constantly, how we can do our work better. Then we're partnering and collaborating all the time with how we can learn from each other. And then we are creating predictable cycles for our students and for our staff. And then we revisit those and we refine what's going on to make sure that we even take it deeper. And so we are constantly using that kind of a system within our school for academic growth, for social and emotional growth, for behavior support. It's really wraparound work that we're doing in our schools, in both of our schools, in all of our schools, in 191. And then we are committed in our school to effective collaboration. We're learning about our strengths. We're learning how to bring our strengths together as we work with each other in teams. We're learning how to braid together special education and general education and multilingual learning. And then all of that is intended to be informed by research-based instruction, so with Hagerty and with the Fast for Success. And then all of it is bathed in cultural proficiency. It has to be bathed in cultural proficiency so that we create students that are powerful and strong and supported and celebrated in every aspect of who they are.
So our path, as we continue forward at Sky Oaks, is to continue all of the work that we're doing and to continue to refine all of our systems. But specifically, Sky Oaks is involved in a PBIS cohort. The Minnesota PBIS holds sessions where we're able to really look at our PBIS model and refine and make improvements to the work that we've been doing in PBIS and to give it a refresh. Our Continued School Improvement, which is much around literacy, Fast for Success, Hagerty, all the things we've been hearing about tonight, and our work with the Regional Center for Excellence through our Special Education Department and the Regional Center for Excellence to improve both our math, reading, and attendance scores for special education students.
And our pathway at Hidden Valley echoes exactly what Renee said about our Continued School Improvement in all of the areas that we've talked about tonight. In addition, we are really building our parent partnership model so that we have our families coming in to learn. We've asked what kind of support we can provide for families around the learning that's happening in the school. And then also have time for them to raise questions and concerns so that we can address how to really partner more strongly with our parents. Hidden Valley is an international peace site. And so just a couple of weeks ago, we had our peace site rededication. And so we do that every year, where we commit, again, to becoming peaceful, more peaceful, and deepening how we live and breathe together in our school. And then PBIS practices are throughout every aspect of what we do each day in our school. And we have also done some work with restorative practices. And how do we teach our children to really understand how their actions impact and can empower others? And also, when something's been broken, how do we fix that? So our last slide just gives you some of our kids talking about some of the things that they really love about our schools.
We have DVD hard and make a smile.
What I like about the school is doing math. I'm seeing the teachers in math.
I like it to carry you close.
I like doing music.
I like you, of course.
My favorite subject is math. And sometimes my sister helps me with math, and I love it. She always teaches me with IXL or something. And my favorite, my favorite thing about my classroom is my locker and my tables.
I like my classroom, but I like my school.
What I like about Hidden Valley is the schedules are super organized.
What I like best about Hidden Valley is how the front entrance looks.
I like how the school doesn't choose sides over kids. Whenever a kid is having a problem with another, they do not take sides. They try to help both kids in the situation.
What I like about Hidden Valley is there's nice teachers and there's nice kids, and it's a really nice school.
What I like best about our school is the diversity.
What I like best about our school is dealers because I have a lot of new things to learn.
What I like about Hidden Valley is everyone's kind, and all the teachers are nice and kind.
I like about the school is the teachers and the specialists.
I like the school because it's really, everyone is really kind to each other.
What I like to Hidden Valley is when we write and read with our teacher and writing teacher. I love writing and reading, the best thing in math.
I like about my school, I like working.
I like, I like spending fun, stuff and fun times with my friends.
Like is recess.
We thought we would end there with recess, everyone's favorite. Our kids love our schools, and we love our kids. And it is so incredible to be able to impact them and to open doors for their future. And so it's really an honor to be part of our schools and to do our work together.
So just share, beginning to visit these schools on a regular basis, what you're hearing is real, it's authentic. They are places of overwhelming joy. I would put these two schools up against any schools in the state of Minnesota. And it's a testament to the leadership for creating those conditions and the teachers. You know, what's joyful is teachers getting kids what they need and kids getting what they need, right? That spreads that joy. So I thank you for making that possible and send it back to Director Hume, Chair Hume.
Thank you. Board members, are there any comments or questions? Director Connor.
I am just so thrilled. It warms my heart to hear this program is succeeding so well and that you found it, the work you put into it. I don't want to echo what somebody else said because it was already said, but I'm just telling you, I'm so impressed and so proud of all of you. And it was wonderful hearing from the kids and you teachers that came out, the presenters too, of course. But it really, I mean, I'm just happy and impressed. And thank you so much for the work you've done. It's so exciting to see these kids like this. It's awesome.
Any others?
I just wanted to, I guess, focus on like the confidence part that I had heard from LeAnn. Because I thought that was really interesting, how like you were saying, the Tier Two and like Tier Three, the kids are gaining a lot of confidence in like the small groups like that. And I guess I'm interested to see how that carries over, like, through their educational career. Because especially, so like the Tier Two and Tier Three kids are the ones that are needing a little more help. And hopefully, they'll get to the point of taking honors classes. But if they're going to stay in maybe like a mainstream class, there's like a common occurrence of minimal participation from students. And I think a lot of it is like, you know, that lack of confidence just to jump out there. And I mean, I see way more participation in classes where the kids are confident with their ideas because they're willing to, you know, they're willing to defend themselves if needed and, you know, explain further into their opinions. And it's really hard to like quantitatively measure confidence as we go through the, you know, ranks of elementary school to middle school to high school. But I think if that, if this program continues with the SIPS, I hope to see that that actually helps further participation in classes too. So I don't know how we'd measure that really, but hopefully, it just happens.
So I love all of our schools. I think our schools are amazing. I'm particularly fond of Hidden Valley. If my kids didn't go to William Burr, and I wish they would go there. But does Hidden Valley still, because I remember the mural that they had there, "No Place for Hate." Do you still have it?
We do. I don't think we would have to be forced to take it down, I think.
Right, yes. Don't ever take it down. I want, yes, because I just remember reading about that and how touched I was that that was created. I'm very proud that that's in our district. I don't know who created that or came up with it, but it's beautiful.
It was created by Sarah Merkel, our art specialist. And she did it with all of the children, each one of the feathers on the bird. From each one of the students.
And I wish we could like somehow put that everywhere in our district because I think it's such a beautiful mantra. I mean, it just speaks to every, it should speak to everybody in our district. There is no place for hate. And I feel like that's what makes our district so unique, is that we have like so many people that respect each other and are different cultures. that respect each other and our different cultures, and that's, you know, why we are who we are as a district. So, I just wanted to say that.
Director Alt.
Thank you, yes. I too noticed the, um, the comments about confidence, and what came to mind for me over time was appreciating the confidence versus the compliance of students, that, you know, their active engagement, and the movement, and the fun, is building that confidence, and bringing the aggressive growth, which, this is new. I mean, I, I, you know, in, in visiting the schools, you know, and meeting with the principals, and looking at the data, over time, I'm seeing this level of aggressive growth with this program. I can't say that I've, that I've seen it, and, um, it just, it really warms my heart to know that our kids are getting that aggressive growth, and I'm just so hopeful that, you know, the pilot continues with that, because that's exactly what our kids need in order to catch up. Now, the follow-up, of course, is, you know, pandemic set everybody back, regardless of age, in terms of learning and social emotional skills. Not for tonight, certainly, but my mind went to, okay, what is it that we're doing in our middle schools for the kids that were, you know, fourth and fifth graders, that aren't benefiting from this, and are in need of that?
So, Chair Hume, members of the board, Director Alt, if you recall, when the middle school principals presented, that they also made literacy a focus, so they're using all the avid literacy strategies. So, um, I've met with all of our building leadership teams, and shared with them that literacy is the foundation to all learning, and so, it is actually pre-K-12. Even at the high school, they are working on that in various ways. So, yes, the middle school is also addressing it, and it is our hope that it's joyful learning, but then we also see that confidence, and then the results in the data.
Yep, thank you for that.
Any other comments?
Can I make a quick comment?
Director Masson.
So, all the great things have been said. I just want to say one thing about having the parent partnership. I think that's very important, and I'm glad that you are working towards that, because the secret ingredient might be Hagerty, but I think the magic is happening, because the teachers love this, and they believe in it, and so, it's going to the students. And it would be great to have the parents also be in the loop, and know what's going on, because we all know when teacher, when students come home, they want to talk to their parents about what they did today and everything, and so, it would be nice for the parents to also be on the same page, and know what their kids are learning. So, that's great, and thank you to everybody.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? All right, I will just say thank you. This has been really, not just interesting, but also very enlightening, informative, very heartening information. I think, I'm sure it's not a coincidence, that we had our pre-K kindergarten readiness presentation immediately followed up by these two schools. I appreciate that the two topics very much complement each other and build on each other. The last hour-ish has been really, really fascinating conversations. So, thank you for all the work that went into putting this together tonight.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we will receive a report about the Strategic Dashboard and Profile of a Learner from Dr. Teresa Battle, Dr. Kathy Funston, Amy Pietrowski, Erin Tinkenberg, and Amina Oftendahl. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you, Chair Hume, members of the board. So, tonight, we're going to shift to how what you just heard about really started, with the approval of the strategic roadmap, and all the work we've been doing to develop the roadmap. So, tonight, we're going to present the final version of the 191 Profile of a Learner. I want to thank Director Funston for her leadership in convening a group of stakeholders to develop the profile, and for engaging national experts to facilitate the work to accomplish the final version we present tonight. Also, I want to thank Amina Oftendahl, Amy Pietrowski, Erin Tinkenberg, and also Kathy for the work as part of the Strategic Roadmap Steering Committee. Wanted to give you our approach to the dashboard of metrics of success that we also are presenting tonight. So, first, we aligned the metrics coming before you for, in a draft form, aligned to the four strategic directions. We also know that we are a very data-rich district, so it was important for us to narrow down to what we believe are the most important metrics for the board to track. Some, as you know, are required by law. So, for example, one metric we looked at was attendance. And so, um, attendance is embedded in a few of the metrics we present tonight. For example, looking at suspension and expulsions, the disproportionality. It's important to look at all out-of-classroom or school time, because that impacts learning. And so, when we look at definitions from the federal government about absenteeism, it includes whether a parent approved a absence for a doctor's appointment, a trip to the nurse's office, or whether it's because of disciplinary action. So, the metrics we present tonight, we tried to get one or two for each of the topics, because it can become so unwieldy. So, with that, I'll share the overview slide, the 191 Profile of a Learner. Really, our guiding question was what experience do we want for our learners? And then, for the dashboard, how are we going to measure our progress? And then, we'll end with next steps. And so, I'll turn it over to Dr. Funston to share the Profile of a Learner that we've been working on with our stakeholders, we're so excited.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Good evening, Chair Hume, directors of the board. I'd like to go back and just restate a quote that Principal Black shared with us from Margaret Wheatley. And she said, "There is no power for change greater than a community discovering what it cares about." And the Profile of a Learner is really a collaboration of our community for our community of students. It identifies the attributes students need to help them to be future-ready and community-strong, and it assists with the district in creating programs and opportunities to support the development of these attributes. The process of creating these Profile of a Learning supports our strategic directions through soliciting multiple stakeholder voice, using open-ended questions, by identifying focus areas that allow each student to develop as an individual, and by asking us to be innovative in why and how students learn, and by creating systems of student support that include our community at large. In our work together as a community, we identified seven different focus areas, and these focus areas will be shared in more detail in the next coming slides. And the pictures that you are seeing here come from our first steering committee meeting, that was an in-person meeting, where we had eighty-four participants, and I'll share a little bit more about who was at that meeting. So, the Profile of a Learner is really a vehicle to ensure common understanding when we talk about what we hope for our 191 graduates. The attributes and definitions for this Profile of a Learner, which is our Profile of a Learner, was created by students, teachers, administrators, parents, staff from all departments, community members, business leaders, nonprofits, and city and county leaders. It included two steering committee meetings with one hundred and fourteen participants, two focus groups, and two hundred and two survey responses from our staff, our students, and our business community. And I'd just like to thank Ava for her leadership in this. Ava not only is serving on our steering committee, but Ava also led a large group of students to come together for a focus group, to give us more information and data, and help us develop this Profile of a Learner from the student's point of view. So, thank you, Ava. This particular slide shows each attribute in more detail. It describes the attribute, it describes what the attribute is, and further clarifies what the attribute looks like in action. Because we want to ensure common understanding, I won't paraphrase this, because the words are meaningful. So, from this one, you can see our academically-ready attribute. Our community identified the areas of thinking critically, collaborating, and communicating with others, solving problems, and applying knowledge and skills. And then, those definitions underneath those really clarify, what does this look like when our students are showing this attribute? So, it's easy for us in a school district to be able to identify where in our system, where in a class, where in the curriculum, where in activities and experiences can we highlight and elevate these attributes for our students? We have this exact same profile for each one of the attributes. So, we have civic-minded, financially-ready, future-ready, life-ready, workplace-ready, and culturally proficient.
Thank you, Dr. Funston, thank you, Chair Hume, and members of the board. Of course, one of our strategic directions as a district is to engage our community, and ensure common understanding of our work. We'll be working over the next months, and then going forward, to make sure that our community under, our community members, especially parents and students, understand what this Profile of a Learner means. One of the things that opened my eyes in the last steering committee meeting, actually, was some comments from one of the participants about just making sure that it's, it comes across clearly to all of our communities that may receive it in a different way. And so, one of the first things that I want to do, when it comes to communicating, is actually listen. So, I'm going to spend some time over the next weeks, and probably going forward beyond that as well, listening, whether it's meeting with cultural liaisons, parent groups, staff groups, and things like that, to share a little bit about the profile, and hear from them, what it means to them, what they're hearing, what they're understanding, and then, from that, build out more of our communication strategies, and really how we're going to present it, again, to make sure there's that common understanding. Then, Incorporated just showed here some of the strategies or tactics that we'll certainly be able to use as we go forward, including, obviously, we'll build it into our website. We want people who find us and are thinking about whether or not they want to bring their children to District 111 schools, to understand the experience that they'll have here, and what they can hope for their child as they go through the school system. Of course, incorporating it into printed materials, and staff onboarding materials, so that staff understand as well what the Profile of a Learner is. And then, of course, some more dynamic ways, such as the printed Wayfinder magazine. We've had themes, and certainly, the theme Profile of a Learner makes sense in the coming one. And then, you can see some of the other tactics that we have, and vehicles that we have for delivering those. So, the, exactly how we'll roll it out, and how we'll communicate it, will depend on what I hear, and what we hear from some of our stakeholder groups, but that's the vehicles we have available to us.
This slide represents each of the strategic directions, and we have all worked with teams to determine the indicators of success for each one of the strategic roadmap directions. We wanted to find indicators of success and progress that are clear, that are consistently available, that align with the intent of each direction. And some indicators, as Dr. Battle has already mentioned, are already in place, guided by World's Best Workforce and Achievement and Integration reporting requirement.
So, aligning with the strategic roadmap is ensuring that the district is creating spaces and opportunities for all voices to be heard, from our students, our families, and our staff. Questions from the Minnesota Student Survey, our Parent Survey, and our Staff Survey will provide us with the information to ensure the district is providing those spaces and opportunities for all.
The next item is actively leading by developing and sustaining a diverse and equitable education system. This calls on us to consider indicators that reveal how well our system is working for all of the diverse communities in our school system. Leaning into the CPSS guiding principles that remind us that not only is there diversity within groups that have unique needs, but also that people are served in varying degrees by the dominant culture. This asks us to recognize that all data and progress indicators needs to be examined through a lens of who is being served, and who is being underserved. Looking at academic indicators, outcome disparities, and other areas of disproportionality allow us to identify ways that our system can improve and evolve into an equitable system in which all are served. You see some examples of what some of those indicators will be here.
And as Director Oftendahl mentioned, with the World's Best Workforce and the Achievement and Integration reports, college and career readiness and graduation data are presented when she brings those reports to you. And our, our innovation really extends beyond requirements in many of these reports, like our AA degree pathway, where students, especially those in the academic middle, are going to develop the skills and mindsets that are going to be needed for success in rigorous courses.
And I'll say a little bit about the annual report on school department innovative programs. So, our, most of these metrics are based on student data, and so, how do we as a system see that innovation in our departments? So, for example, in our community ed department, typically, we would have credit recovery after school or during the summer. So, the new original thinking was, how about we use the ESER funds to offer it during the day, and we hired two credit recovery teachers? We are already on track, even though it's the beginning of second semester, to exceed the number of credits earned all of last year. So, we decide, we need to highlight that, and so, what we came up with was this annual report where programs could showcase, and then we'd have a report to the board.
And in addition to these reports, the Profile of a Learner will provide additional opportunities to highlight innovative work that is already happening in our district, but doesn't always have the forum to be elevated.
And then, lastly, when we look at strategy four, engaging our community to ensure common understanding around our strategic roadmap and the district work, some of the indicators that we'll continue to monitor are from the parent and community survey, as well as the staff survey, just measuring familiarity with some of the key components of our district work, like pathways, how informed people feel, and how engaged people feel in the decision-making of the district, again, from those parent and community surveys, and the staff survey as well. And then, lastly, enrollment, of course, is an important metric for our school district, for any organization, really, and this doesn't fit under one particular strategic direction, but really aligns underneath all of them, or all of them work together to serve this. And the metrics that we're talking about using to measure that are cohort stability from year to year, and capture rate, rather than a specific enrollment number, because, of course, we're not always in control of who's born here, or how many people are moved into the area. And then, yeah, the next steps would be board approval of the dashboard. I think we're looking at, potentially, at the next board meeting. And then, work to align the curriculum to the Profile of Learning, and matching up the profile to where we're teaching it in, throughout the grades.
And that concludes our report, thank you.
Thank you very much. Board members, are there comments or questions? Director Chester?
Yeah, so, um, understanding that the, the Profile of a Learner that we see here is kind of the, what we're hoping that our graduates are having attained through the course of their education here, so this is kind of like the, the end step. And I think what I heard right bef, right as you ended, is that the goal is to eventually adopt this, so that we can understand what a Profile of a Learner would look like in kindergarten, in these buckets, or elementary school, middle school.
I'm sure that Amina and everybody else can dig into that a little bit, but I actually think of it as... think of it as profile of learner, not just a profile of a graduate, that students are learning and gaining these skills and these competencies all the way through from pre-kindergarten all the way through 12th grade until they graduate. And then the work in terms of aligning is finding where we're teaching each of those attributes, where students are gaining each of those attributes, all, again, all the way through the grade levels, not just to make sure that they have it at the end, but that they're learning it all, all along the way.
And then there'll be some sort of a metric of reporting that progress is being made.
In terms of the alignment?
Yeah, they're, they're being, embracing the profile of a learner.
That's a great question. That's one of our next steps in this process. So we've developed collaboratively with our community what these attributes are. And then the next step for us, which will be at least a year in the making, will be where are these, these attributes located in our curriculum and in the experiences? And then how do we measure the attainment of these attributes by our students? So what does that look like? And then how can we share those measures with you and our community?
And then for, for students who are challenged, let's say with autism and may have what we would consider valleys, you know, because it's a spectrum, where they're extra challenged in being able to, it's not in their, it's harder to grasp or adopt some of these characteristics. What, I mean, is there, is that being thought of and realizing that, you know, regulating one's emotions may be more challenging to some than others?
Yep, I can go ahead and answer that. I think that when, when we are working at these from the beginning through the end and looking at what the students need and how they look, we want to make sure that we are preparing our students to the best that we can for the community, for the employment and for those things. And though, when I take a look at that, I think of the transition skills and the transition things, especially with the IEP through that process. And so making sure that we are aligning that also with the, with the profile of a learner. I think that this is a really good base as to what it looks like for all students, so.
To give you an example, I thought of thinking critically. I had an example when I went to the beverage area for best and I forgot my punch card. And so I waited with the student and I asked, what do you think I should do? So the student took a second. And to me, that's thinking. Why don't you go get it and bring it back and I'll punch it? So it's all levels of thinking critically.
Mm-hmm.
So we may have a, you saw a student high school entrepreneur who developed a whole product and she was ready to sell it. That's thinking critically about what she wants to take the next steps of her business. So I think we're looking at them each as individuals.
Yeah.
There isn't a set, but are they making progress? Are they becoming confident?
Mm-hmm.
So it's not, we have this metric, all kids have to achieve this in this way.
Yeah.
Hope that's helpful.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think that the idea is that we have a, a picture of what every student should look like.
Right.
But rather that these are attributes that we want, that we think are valuable for all students to have as they grow and learn and get ready for their, to pursue their pathways.
Other, Dr. Miller and then Dr. Connor.
First of all, thank you. A lot of work obviously has gone into this, extensive work. I'm gonna harley a little on what was, we've been talking about here, my take on this as I was going through it. I, I found Erin, your, your point on listening very intuitive because I do think, you know, there's going to be some different reception of this as it goes forward. So playing the devil's advocate a little bit, I, you know, someone in the community that isn't aware of the level of expertise behind this, looking at the, I'm looking back kind of at the summary slide with the, the student in the middle profile of a learner, but looking at this saying, why, you know, and I'm not asking you this, I'm just suggesting this might be the, you know, why, you know, aren't, isn't your job just to get them out of high school with a diploma and maybe get them onto college if they're the, you know, upper 20% or whatever it might be, you know, it's a, so, because this almost could easily read profile of a citizen across the top rather than a learner, right? And I'm, I'm, so my suggestion would be to connect the dots more on why these attributes are important to success, not in getting them out of high school and diploma and going to college or whatever it is that, you know, they do after, you know. But I am also quite struck by how much of this isn't traditionally what a school would do, right? Really just the one box in the upper corner, academics as mentioned, the rest of it is, is so much more about citizenship and being a good human being, you know, and then that leads itself, as we know, to, to educational excellence. I am a little, a couple of things I would have, if I'd been in this project, might have injected in is, is inquisitive, and maybe it's buried in here or something, but the asking why or asking, constantly asking why, and confidence. These are two attributes I've discovered, you know, I was a late, I came back to academics and when I did, I found that having the confidence of believing I knew what was wanted and needed to help me exceed exceptionally well at academics. And that has carried forward into my business world, you know. Just being able to say, I know what's going on, ask why and then say, I know what's going on. These, I think those are important aspects to learning all the way through life, so maybe they're buried in here somewhere, but I would, I would encourage those to be highlighted. But else, as I, you know, it's, it's an amazing overview and amazing job, a lot to unpack, a lot to sort of read through and, and think about, so thank you.
Dr. Connor?
Yes. Excuse me, I appreciate you clarifying that it's not just a profile of a learner, because I was focused, I, I sounded like it was focusing more on high school and after high school, but it is all the way K through 12. So thanks for pointing that out to me. But what I, I, I didn't see, and maybe this was, I missed it under life skills, is some focus on relationship skills, and by that I mean like interactions between not just family, but gender, like boys, girls, dating, that type of thing, you know. I mean, that's kind of an important big deal in life. I mean, that's a big part of life. And I didn't, I did, did I miss that? Did I, I didn't see anything mentioned about that, and I think it's important that kids know that and even a little, huh? Oh, I'm sorry, even a, a little, oh, a little further as far as family relationships is what I mean, parenting. I mean, because kids, you know, as we know, I don't think the pregnancy rate has dropped that I know of. So, you know, they, I just think they, we should put, incorporate this in the strategy too, and that maybe those are things that we need to focus on also. But I do think it's a really well-rounded range of focus as a, as a citizen, a human being. It's, it's great, but I just, those particular things I think are important to have in there too. So that's just my intake. It wasn't in there, was it? Didn't I miss it?
It's not specifically called out in that way, but we can look to see if there's some other language that kind of works around that and we can add some specificity to that.
It did come up in, in some of the conversations with the large group. I remember folks having conversations about building relationships, lifelong relationships, familial, familial relationships, those types of things. So it, it, it's in there somewhere. I don't know if it's as explicit though.
And focusing on being responsible for yourself and others and not taking on that responsibility too early. That type of thing, but okay, that's, and emotional well-being. I think that's, okay. Thank you so much for all your work. This was very good and very comprehensive.
Dr. Worf?
Um, yes, I, I want to concur that, you know, this was obviously very extensive work that was put into this and just great work and, but I'm, as I'm looking through this and seeing, you know, what we're, you know, looking at doing as far as marketing or I guess, I, I'm wondering is how are we marketing this? Like what, what is the message? Because when I see all of this information, it's overwhelming to me. Like when I see all these different pieces, I'm like, that's a lot of information. How are you going to package it in something that seems a little bit more like tied up in a bow kind of thing, like where it's like not so like, oh wow, that's a lot of information on the, you know, profile of a learner. I mean, it, it's like, how is this going to be communicated in a way that's meaningful to people where they're just not like, wow, that's overwhelming? You know what I mean?
Yeah, that's the question, right? So how do you, how do you make something simple that's really, really complicated? And that is, that's my job, that's our job in the communications department. So I, I don't have a real clear answer for you right now other than I would say through stories, you know, so one of the ways that we've been over the last two years telling the pathways story and explaining, helping to explain pathways to people through journey stories, just demonstrating here's a person who's found, find their passion and following it and, and doing something meaningful with it. And that's just a real clear concept that people can latch on to and understand and hopefully see themselves as part of or see their child as part of. How that'll play out for the pathways, I, I don't know yet, but we'll find a way to do it and we'll, it'll probably involve stories.
Great, well, I look forward to seeing how that progresses.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Dr. Alt?
Turn my mic on. Thank you. Yeah, I, I can't reiterate enough clearly, a lot of time and effort has been put into this and it's incredible. It's just really, really awesome. One comment, and Dr. Battle, you had addressed my question right up front about attendance, that attendance is of course embedded in this. Is that, is it both attend, I think you, you answered this, it's both for the day as well as for classes missed?
So I'll have Director Oftedal explain a little bit about disproportionality. So what the research says about attendance is that it's a lagging indicator. You need to focus your, your energy on what the conditions that help create kids wanting to be at school. And then Dr. Belmont, I think he can add a little bit. He was our researcher on that and gave us some research if he wanted to add more, but Director Oftedal, talk about the disproportionality-
Right.
-and the attendance link.
So the federal indicators for attendance are consistent attendance, which would be 90% attendance, but as Dr. Battle alluded to, that 90% attendance, any absence for any reason is included within that. So when she talked about, I'm out, I'm out for, you know, a doctor's appointment versus I'm out because I am going on a vacation with my parents, or I'm out because I'm on a field trip, or whatever those things are, is that all of them count equally? They are not, they are not disaggregated in any way. And so it comes out as a large kind of chunk and becomes one of those numbers that's valid only from a large view and becomes less meaningful as you drill down into like individual buildings or individual students because it, the variables are so great. So that's, that's part of the reason why that indicator, while it's there, tends to have a lot of input into it and so it's not very clear.
And so probably for part of attendance, discipline might also-
Yes.
...track it depending on, you know, I'm at school, but I'm not in class.
I'm not in class, yeah.
Right. Thank you for that, that was helpful. I concur with Director Miller, listen, I, that just really struck me, you know, as leaders, that is our challenge, right? We serve our community and, you know, when you're out and talking with people and, you know, listening, we know that we're, you know, you're going to be hearing all kinds of opinions and they, 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 they're valuable. They're our community, as one former board member said, would say, caring loudly if they're disagreeing. So, you know, we, we take the feedback graciously and we listen and, you know, do with it as, as we need to. On slide nine, there's mention of employee indicators. Is that something that's still a work in progress or is there more information?
So I'll, members of the board, Director Alt, I believe in our September 29th update, I shared that we needed to work on the profile of a learner first to see the dispositions and employees that we need. And so that's another facet that will probably take a year.
Okay, that makes sense. And I guess this might, this, the answer to this might be really obvious as kind of a concrete, more like concrete person who likes to see data. When the dashboard comes forward, is it going to be a dashboard where we have columns and, and, you know, I, I, I appreciate all this information here and I can get a sense for, you know, there's a lot of detail what we're going to be looking at. When I hear dashboard, I think dashboard.
Graphics.
Yeah, well, graphics, charts, you know.
Yeah, graphically presented, though.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Definitely it'll be consumable just by looking at it rather than having to read a-
Right.
-several pages.
Yeah.
That'll be the goal.
Awesome, thank you.
And actually we're researching different models. Some of you are familiar with vision cards. That's one example, so how to, we've been looking at some of different ways to represent. If you recall, instructional team and I went to a conference, I think so long ago. Was that Washington DC? And we, the school districts who had, already had profile of a learner, they had metrics too. So we have a lot of samples.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Any other comments, questions? All right. This has been great. I think as others have said, I have nothing to add other than it's a lot of information, a lot to digest. Thank you for all that has been done up to this point and we look forward to seeing what happens next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, are there, is board committee appointments and school reports? Are there any reports from board members regarding board committees, appointments or school assignments this evening? Director Chester?
Yes, the negotiation, not negotiation, sorry. Woo, not on that committee.
Oddly, a little coup d'etat.
Legislative committee met on Tuesday, yes. And we had Representatives Hanson and Berg with us and we reviewed our legislative platform and they were very thrilled about the legislative platform that we have and it's very much in alignment with what they're trying to do at the Capitol as well. They said this is the year. And also just today, yesterday, today, yesterday, we had our bills heard.
Yesterday.
Yesterday. We had our bills heard at the Senate and the House regarding our exemption that we are seeking.
Thank you.
That concludes that report.
All right.
Exemptions which are-
The legislative, the exemption for the sale of proceeds from my caf.
Gotcha.
Perhaps we should share an update about that after the, is there a policy review committee update?
I mean, the review, we're going to be going over a lot of them and bringing up a lot of second readings or presenting reviews, so that concludes that.
All right.
We went over a lot in the policy meetings.
We have a lot on the agenda, I'd say that's true.
Yep.
Y'all will be busy. All right. I think I am going to share a quick update about, since you brought it up. Yesterday, Dr. Battle and I attended House and Senate committee hearings for our legislative exemption that we've been working on to regarding the potential proceeds from any property sales that we may have. We, the House committee meeting, was, was the House Education Finance Committee meeting. Senator Port was there, she's the sponsor of the bill, so she was there with us.
Senate first, not House.
Oh, Senate was first at 8:30 in the morning and then it was the House. That's right, because Senator Port was there. That's right, because Senator Port was there. So, that was the first meeting. She presented, Dr. Battle presented, I answered a question. And then, a couple hours later, we had the House Education Finance Committee meeting, and Representative Hanson was there for that. And again, that was very short, we were probably, that testifying was probably less than five minutes. Dr. Battle gave her update, Representative Hanson, there were one or two questions, and then we were done. It was, they were very, both committees, I felt, had some good questions, but were very, seemed to be very supportive of what we were asking for. So, Dr. Battle, unless you have anything to add, that will conclude my report on that.
Did you want reports on, like, the AMSD or any of that?
If you have them, sure.
Yeah, sure. Okay, this was just for December of last year, because I think, I was missing, I think. And anyway, it was just, we had a speaker, Robin Francis, and they were from Forbes Solutions, and they were just discussing about the needs that our kids are saying they need, that they want to see. Three out of, oh, it was a collaborative call to action, is what it was called. And students from all across the United States all gathered for this, and it was called a World Cafe, you remember that, it was the last year, like I said. But anyway, I never got to report it, so. So, they were just talking about different things, support for their peers, and all type of different, there were things that they felt that they needed. Sports, they talked about social media, they call it like barber shop talk, but it was very positive, and it was a good environment. Three of our district students also participated in this World Cafe. And one of them was, she was a student that filled in for our representative last year, and her name was Sahim? Saham? Saham? Okay, Saham. And anyway, she participated in that, so, yeah. So, she was previous to you, Ava, I mean, the other, anyway. So, yeah, so that was very interesting, that World Cafe, just listening about that. And then a January meeting of the AMSD was, we had a speaker who was talking about ways to achieve funding for mental health in our schools, and he was just talking about the truth of community is told by well-being, the well-being of our students, which is, I feel is a very good statement. And they were just talking about the, they had a lot of statistics. One of them was 135,000, fifth through ninth grade, fifth through 11th graders, actually, across the state from January to June, all claimed that they, or have experienced anxiety and depression, these are the ones they polled, and 29 to 28% of them considered suicide. And so, they just thought that care from their teachers was very important, and they felt that it was decreased during COVID. Students don't feel safe in schools, more funding for mental health is needed, and that was pretty much the focus of that information. And so, that is something they're working on, and of course, we're going to be getting government funding for that, hopefully, and that's what they're trying to do through AMSD. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Do any other board members have any reports? Director Miller?
Yesterday evening, I filled big shoes and showed up for the Burnsville Hall of Fame meeting as the newly appointed representative from our august body here. The meeting was held at the Burnsville High School, it was the first meeting of the year, and just some sort of housekeeping stuff was covered. It was of interest to me, I don't know if you guys knew this, but we, the board of district, used to fund them. They've become self-sufficient over the last few years. In fact, they ended with a net profit of $4 last year, so covering all expenses. And they do that through fundraising, so you may have it. They've now been able, through our, I guess through our services, have been able to add PayPal and credit card donations, so you may hear a knock on the door in the near future. Nominations, currently they have five nominations ready, possibly a couple others in the works. For the public's notice, due date for nominations is March 17th. And they do continue to look for anybody that's willing or interested in serving on this committee. I think there are a few that probably are ready to move on eventually. And setting future dates was part of the agenda, we set a few in April, May, and August. And that about wraps it up for the Hall of Fame, more to come.
Thank you very much. Any others?
Yes. ISD 917 meets the first Tuesday of the month, although we met not the first Tuesday, because that was the second of January, we met the week following.
There's always exceptions.
Yeah, make an exception. Coming out of that meeting, it was just something that's actually on tonight's agenda is, fun fact, didn't know this, apparently, school board elections used to be in May or June, and so when people were being sworn in, they're being sworn in in July to coincide with the school's budgeting year. And somehow, that changed, but 917 never changed their board terms and swearing people in in July instead of in January. And so, what you're seeing is that 917 is finally going, we should catch up with everybody and actually have our terms start in January, like the member districts. And so, they're making that adjustment now.
Thank you.
Who votes, though? What is the voting, or is it only a nomination and appointment process?
It's, I think, well, I never understand the, I think, 917, so we voted to change the term starts from July to January, which now is going to change our appointments.
Right, but the seats are appointed only, right? That's the reason they can, have gotten away with that.
Yeah, right, right.
Elected by?
Yeah, elected and appointed.
There's no other voices involved, is what I was asking.
Yeah, and there's also differentiations within how the member districts choose to, who is appointed to those seats as well. So, we have a couple member districts appointees actually not being board members on their district board.
Oh, yes.
Only a couple, but I don't know if it's until their terms end, so that one, kind of like what happened with Didi.
Yes, we had a conversation about that one time, yes.
That concludes that report.
All right. Thank you very much. Any others? All right. Next, that concludes the information portion of our meeting, so we'll now move on to the business portion of the meeting. We'll start by approving the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold a discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. All right, the first item under new business is to, oh.
I was saying, oh, I just thought maybe we could take a little five-minute break or something.
Do we need to take a five-minute recess?
I just need to go to the restroom, I didn't want to miss.
Two and a half hours.
Been almost.
Yeah, it's been.
All right, let's adjourn for five minutes. We'll take a five-minute recess.
Thank you very much.
You bet, thanks for suggesting it. Stacy is here. All right, I think we are going to reconvene. The next item is to approve the, right, 2023 Pay Equity Report presented by Stacy Silvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services. Welcome, Stacy.
Good evening, Chair Hume, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Bringing to you the Pay Equity Report for 2023. In 1984, the Minnesota Legislature passed the local government Pay Equity Act. The intent of this statute was to ensure that public employees are compensated and public employers compensate both men and women equitably for comparable, but not necessarily identi- identical work. We have to complete this report every three years. And, um, and to pass the test, we have to pass all three components, our three prongs of the test. The statistical, statistical analysis, the, it is after nine o'clock after all. The salary range test and the exceptional services pay test, and the district did pass all three. With that, it is my recommendation that the Board of Education approve the 2023 Pay Equity Report.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the 2023 Pay Equity Report?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester.
Second.
Seconded by Director Werb. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Um, next, we're being asked to approve on a first reading basis changes to Policy 515, Protection and Privacy of Student Records, presented again by Stacy Silvine.
Yep, and again, we're bringing this policy. It did go before the Policy Review Committee. Uh, there is changes to where MSBA added the section for Educational Support Service data, um, talking what that looks like and providing the definition of that. Also, the Policy Committee, um, just noticed inconsistencies within the policy, actually that stems from federal and state law, where they like to go back and forth between pupil, student, student, pupil, inconsistent. So we just kind of cleaned that up and landed on student throughout the purpose. Um, fairly minor changes otherwise, just a clarification, calling out, um, taking away abbreviations and, and, and calling out the full name. Uh, with that, it is my recommendation that the board approve on a first reading basis changes to Policy 515, Protection and Privacy of Student Records.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this agenda item?
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Any discussion?
Uh, just brief.
Director Miller.
Maybe I only find this amusing because it's after nine o'clock, but in the online version of Board Deck, it actually says Protection, Privacy of Pupil Records. Is not the title Student Record, was not the point of what?
Yes.
We're changing it to Student Records. So maybe we just make sure the official.
Oh, I know, it's the, it's the policy. The name.
Yes, the actual policy name.
Says pupil, yeah.
The document says student.
Document says.
Yeah.
Just saying in board book and heading. Heading in board book reads differently, so that's just a minor tweak that can be changed later, so.
All right, we will get right on that.
Tomorrow morning.
First thing tomorrow morning.
Um, if there is no further discussion, then all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we are being asked to approve on a first reading basis changes to Policies 603, Curriculum Development, and 604, Instructional Curriculum presented by Amina Oftedal, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Welcome back, Amina.
Thank you. Um, it's my recommendation that you approve on the first reading basis the changes to Policy 603, Curriculum Development. Um, the, there was, uh, an added piece, uh, from the Policy Review Committee asking that we include the language, um, on the parent review committee or advisory group, that there is one parent who is not also an employee of the school district, ensuring that we do have some broad representation. Also, the recommendation to accept Policy 604 on the first reading, um, that, uh, we wanted to keep our existing language, uh, in relationship to, uh, students who are, exploring their college and career interests, that, uh, while the MSBA asks for it to be in high school, in our district, our policy, prior policy said, "School district shall assist students by grade six and no later than grade nine," and this aligns with our actual, um, uh, Zello programming that we do with students in middle school. Uh, I would ask for your approval.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve this agenda item?
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Werb. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in fever, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amina. Um, next, we are being asked to approve Policy 208, Development, Adoption, and Implementation of Policies, and that will be presented by Superintendent Dr. Battle.
Thank you, Chair Hume, members of the board. Um, the Policy Committee did review, uh, this Policy 208, and I bring forward the recommendation for your approval. Um, MSBA updated the list of annual review policies. Um, administration did remove redundant texts, and the Policy Review Committee did add, presenting all recommendations for change, uh, in ISD 191 policy to the school board for consideration, and that district administration are also responsible. So I recommend your approval on a first reading basis for changes to Policy 208.
Thank you very much. Um, is there a motion to approve this agenda item?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Second.
Seconded by Director Miller. Any discussion? Is hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Battle. And then the next item we are being asked to approve on a first reading basis, changes to Policy 206, Public Participation in School Board Deliberations, and this will be presented by Director Alt.
Thank you, Chair Hume.
Uh, yes, I brought this, uh, to the, um, Policy Committee for review, um, in the interest of making sure that 191 families, students, and community members are heard at our listening sessions. Um, so I propose the following updates for board consideration. Um, on page 206 dash five, uh, Roman numeral six, Listening Session Protocols. Um, number one, um, each speaker must, uh, provide his or her name as opposed to should. That's one change. The second is also on page 206 dash five, Roman numeral six, A, number nine was added. Um, and this was, uh, added for student and staff data privacy concerns, um, because once any audio or video is released, um, it's out of our control, and, um, there are liability concerns there. So the language that is being recommended, scrolling down, is, uh, number nine, "Video and audio recordings of listening sessions are prohibited. The school board reserves the right to conclude the listening session in the event that such recordings are being made." Uh, and I bring this forward for board consideration.
All right, thank you.
From the committee.
Is there a motion to approve this agenda item?
So moved.
Moved by Director Miller, seconded by Director Connor. Um, is there any discussion?
I, I would just add that additional to the privacy, I think this is an important, um, addendum to the policy because, um, there are, um, as much as we find all of this very easy to come here and spend our evenings in front of microphones and cameras, there are many people that come to listening sessions that are intimidated by the environment. I've had nervous people speak to me when it's just me and one other person in the room. So, uh, when there gets to be a big crowd there, um, people might be, uh, feel nervous and doubly so if they're being recorded. So I think it's in the best interest, in my personal opinion, that we move forward with this.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Um, is there any protocols as to how we end it? Do we just, like, walk out? Do we say, "We are record, you are recording," we stop, or how, how is it handled?
So, two answers to the question. First off, yes, it would simply, you know, the, the residing board members would say, you know, "Listening session is, is concluded." Dr. Battle and I also talked about revising the guidelines for the listening sessions to reflect this, so that, um, to reflect this change, so that, um, if it's, if approved, it would be read as part of those introduct, that introductory statement at the beginning of listening sessions, so that people would be aware before it even begins that this is the expectation.
All right, so then we'll revise that statement to say, like, no recordings are allowed? Okay.
I think it affords a great opportunity to remind that, you know, the, that's a session with the public who's not, not used to, uh, that type of interaction, and it's incumbent on us to, um, be flexible. And, I mean, the vast majority of instances you might run into this are not going to be with intent, right? They're just, it's, we're just used to taking our cameras out, and maybe it's just that I'm proud of my spouse that's getting up and speaking in front of a school board, and I want to record them. We just gently say, "Just by the way, we, we don't allow recordings here, and we'd ask you to put that away, please," you know, so. And instead, we don't have to immediately cancel it or anything.
Okay. Any other comments? I have a concern that I wanted to raise also. Um, I understand the rationale behind this, but the concern I have is what's the protocol say if Carol Levin comes to our listening session? And we have in our policy, video and audio recordings are not permitted. Then we're suddenly potentially looking at a freedom of the press issue. And so I would be very cautious about putting something like this in place that would potentially put us at risk from a, you know, First Amendment perspective.
Well, I think, you know, we know that we've had reporters attend our listening sessions and transcribe the conversation. So the press can be there and record the conversation manually, but, um, in terms of video, video, audio recordings, again, you know, if someone who's speaking mentions the name of a staff or a student member, that person's privacy has been violated. And, um, that's out of our control. Once that's recorded, it's, it's gone.
Is this something that has been brought up in other districts, or has this been run but reviewed by MSBA or by our attorneys?
I don't know.
This particular provision?
I don't know if it's, if it's in other districts. I'm not aware.
Couple of thoughts. First of all, uh, bear in mind that we reserve the right to interpret policy as we desire as board members. So we, you know, we're, we're not, we're not writing something that we, we are free to, given the circumstances, let Fox nine set up their camera if that, if we vet them and decide that's appropriate, given the circumstances. Second of all, we, I'd mind you that we have no obligation to have a listening session whatsoever by law, and we have every right to put whatever restrictions we want on it. Um, there is nothing, um, there's nothing that says that we're required to have public interaction, or, you know, that's something we choose to do through, uh, you know, by choice. Uh, each district handles that differently. So you'd find, looking around, I think you'd find a vastly different response to that in different districts.
And you know what? You're right, Director Miller, because we know that, at least up until recently, we've been unique with our lis, with the, the format of our listening session, where the listening session is not part of the regular board meeting. Whereas with other boards, it's right at the beginning of the regular meeting, and it is part of the meeting, so of course it's, it is recorded.
Right.
So, yes and no.
Fair. Dr. Connor.
Just a comment, um, during the meeting too, I bought up that about, um, uh, what, what did I call it? Um, just, oh, if it was, um, gonna conflict with, uh, public, what did I call it? A public, uh, line, sorry. I was just saying, like, um, would that be prohibiting, um, their right to public speech? That's what I'm trying to get at. And, um, then when she said her point again, then it didn't make sense, because we are kind of risking, if somebody should say something about a teacher or a child and use the name, you know, then we're risking the student privacy, or the family privacy, or the community privacy. So I think that's a more important issue, because I did bring up your point too. Because I said, "Well, isn't that kind of, aren't we prohibiting then public speak, freedom of speech for them videotaping and doing what, you know?" Because that's, that, that's the meeting. The meeting is public speech, right?
Right.
But I think her, her point was, I, yeah, she won me over, in other words. Because she made a good point about what could happen in those listening sessions.
Right.
So that's all, I was going to comment that I did bring that up.
I just don't want us to put the district in a position where we're potentially violating the First Amendment, or being perceived as violating the First Amendment. So that's, that's the concern I have, if we move forward with approving this.
Right, and I think, again, it's, you know, the press has many ways, as I said, of recording the conversation. And if they're manually writing down and, and transcribing, which I know many of them are skilled at, they get the same information. The other issue that was raised in, in the conversation, we discussed it for at least, you know, a few, few minutes, was, um, you know, identifying, how is staff going to enforce this policy? How do you identify what media, like, who is media?
Right.
And, you know.
Anyone with a cellphone can be a blogger and.
Right, exactly, exactly. So, you know, and I, I respect that.
Yeah, I, not being a legal scholar, I just bear in mind that what we're doing here tonight, for instance, this is, does fall under certain rules and purview of open meeting laws, right? So we're required to allow someone to, the media to come in here and, and observe or whatever, or film. This, a listing session by design, since there's only two board members in there, and we do not have a quorum, that is a, essentially a private meeting of the district. Um, and we are, you know, no different than we, they can't, you know, if they want to bring a camera into a classroom, we can restrict that, depending on the circumstances also. So, right, I assume so, Aaron, right?
Because of student privacy.
Can Aaron come up and clarify a couple of things about that definition of media and?
Yeah, so.
He shared it at the, uh, Policy Committee.
I'm not a legal scholar either by any means. None of us are. I can tell you that there may not be any legal difference between a person walking into a classroom or us prohibiting somebody from going into a classroom with a camera and somebody coming with a camera, you know, prohibiting that in a listening session. But politically, publicly, uh, in terms of perception, public perception, there's a, there would be a huge difference, um, between that. So, again, is it legal? I think we've heard from our lawyers that the board can, uh, absolutely restrict that. That's not, that's not really the question, I don't think. And then in terms of deciding who's media or who's not, I can tell you that I wouldn't be able to do that.
Understandable.
Couldn't, you know, decide, because there are small, uh, you know, news outlets, reporters, and I, I'm not going to be able to judge their credentials or something like that. Any other comments or questions? All right, if not, then, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Um, the motion carries. Thank you, Director Alt. And then the last business item is to appoint Director Leslie Chester as a school board member of Intermediate School District 917 to represent Independent School District 191 for a term that will end on December 31st, 2024. I will be presenting this recommendation. All right. Guess I'm presenting it.
News to me.
Um, no, that's fine. The rec, I think, well, I think Director Chester mentioned it during her report earlier. So the recommendation is that the Board of Education would appoint Director Chester, um, to represent the school district and through December 31st of 2024. Is there a motion to approve this agenda item?
So moved.
Moved by Director Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Director Miller. Is there any discussion?
I, just to clarify, this is just fulfilling the three-year term that I was originally appointed to, it's just putting on an extension to meet the new timeframe.
It's now three and a half years, a one-time, three and a half year term, and then it'll be three years.
Yes.
Go back to being a three-year term.
Yes.
Good clarification.
Okay.
All right, is there any other discussion? If not, then all those in fe, although, I keep saying fever tonight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, the motion carries unanimously. This concludes our regular business meeting. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn to a closed session as permitted by Minnesota Statute 13D 05 subdivision 3A for the mid-year superintendent evaluation?
Second.
All right, moved by Director Alt, seconded by Director Miller. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously, and we will begin our closed session after a, is 10 minutes enough? 10-minute recess?